Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Greenwood City Council meeting. This is Monday, April the 4th, 2022, approximately 7:09 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Yes, I see Brown.
Yes, here.
The Valmeraker?
Yes, here.
About the power of the president, Daniel?
Here.
To the various actions, let's let him hear.
Here.
And the court.
Thank you very much. If everyone would rise, please, we would start our meeting tonight with our prayer led by Pastor Miller from Greenwood with God Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Chief Will Nelson.
Well, we do thank you for the opportunity that we have to pray in a meeting like this, a public meeting, and realize that it helps us to recognize that you are important in our lives, who are important in the decisions that we make. I do pray, Lord, for every council member, and I also pray, Lord, for our mayor, that you will give them wisdom. As your word says in the Book of James, anyone who lacks wisdom needs to ask of God, for he said, "You will give it to us liberally," that means in abundance, and, Lord, we realize how important that is in the day and age in which we are living. So right now, Lord, we just commit this meeting into your hands, and we'll thank you for what will be accomplished in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor Miller, appreciate you coming. And he's gone. All right, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for March 7th, 2022, regular council meeting.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
The motion, the second to approve.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Thank you. I want to say real quick, I'm going to try to, we're not going to rush anything because these are very important items, but if anybody's a fan of a non-raiser back to basketball game, we'll try to get you out of there in 10 seconds to go in the game. So we'll do our best for you, so. Recognizations and acknowledgements, just to recognize the people that are here and acknowledge that you're here, thank you for coming. I don't think we have any special, special guests tonight, but you're all special, okay? You're all, Hunter got upset right there with me, so, but thank you for all coming tonight. Committee reports, everything pretty much has been submitted to you in writing, for the girls' club, as our C.A., Parks Commission, Waterways Parks Commission. So as always, if there's any questions in regards to those reports, or one is missing, or you have questions, contact Danielle from court, and we'll try to get her forth to those and get those answered for you. Committee, I'm sorry, just did that. Assistant forum, no one has signed up this evening, so we'll move on to our financial report. Mr. Tom.
You had a revised two-page key financial data section, I'll just real quickly go over that for the record. The city sales and use tax for 2022, the growth was budgeted at 6%. The same period's growth made of March over March, 6.4%. Our cumulative growth so far this year for three months, 8.2% to 2.2 over budget. That's good data. County sales and use tax revenue, our CST was budgeted at 10%. Our same period, March over March of '21, was 12%. Year-to-date cumulative growth is 17.4%, so we are 7.4% above our budget. As far as advertising and promotion revenue is concerned, we're budgeted 10%. March, we ended up 11.4%. For the year, we're 15.17%, and that's 5.17% over budget, plus that inflationary growth on the day-to-day. As far as cash flow is concerned, our net decrease in cash was $118,983. That's a dividend of some spending that was done that was put off in previous months. Year-to-date net increase in cash is just under a half a million dollars. Our current fund balance for all funds as of March 3rd, first, was $16,275,000. Our percentage increase is 2.95% for the year. Net income was, our total revenue was $3.6 million, so our total expenses are $3 million. Our net income so far for the year 2022, three months, is $568,374. And as far as our capital expense is concerned for our spending, we have through March, spending of $233,000 on a $5.80 budget. We've spent 3.974% of our budgeted capital expense. If you'll turn the page, you're going to see that I'm getting here every month now, our rolling savings on our solar endeavor. This is only for AVEC, the Arkansas Valley Electric Park. The solar impact for three months, if you'll look at the last column in 2022, you'll notice that we had, all in, including the cost for the solar kilowatt-hours that were generated, was $42,269. Last year, for three months at the same time, we had $46,000 in expense, and they're just for AVEC now, and that is maintaining that 10% reduction in our utilities expense so far. If you'll look down at the line graph, you'll notice that the blue is the amount of electricity that's generated and kilowatt-hours that is used during the period of time by the AVEC, by Arkansas Valley, and the orange would be what's generated or what's anticipated to be generated by the solar panels sold as net credit. January, February, and March, we're at or below the net favorable credit. So with a 10% reduction already, and we haven't even generated more than what the Arkansas Valley is, our demands of them has been, we're looking at a period of time coming up in summer months where that increase, we should be looking at an increase in that production percentage, because we're going to, and we haven't even brought on sweatcoat, so that would be disco, if we come online in sweatcoat.
And when would that be? Good question. They have cleared the property, I haven't actually been out there in Waltons since they began, directly reported, they've cleared the property down by the dam or town.
They're just torn the trees down so far.
They've earned them about a week and a half ago.
Okay, so they're, I don't know, but at least they made that much progress.
And worked.
And they didn't hit a utility, so that's good. So, yay, solar. Adip, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Marsh? As was stated, in fact, when we decided to do solar, I think with Bell back there, I believe it's something like, it's just the right thing to do, and we save many money. So so far, it's been the right thing to do, and we're saving money, so that's always part of it. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda are agenda additions, and we do have one, so I don't want to go into too decided, I think we don't have any. We have one, but I actually have a favor to ask of council to really confuse you, but one I'm going to add, we're going to call it number 11, and we're just going to call it the county agreement, but I want to place it up between five and six. We're calling it 11 just to make it easier for Charlotte to keep up, and then I want to flip-flop four and five. Five needs to become, four place, and four and five. Everybody okay with that?
Five, four, eleven.
Yes, yes, yeah, one, two, three, five, four, eleven. I went to school in Brooklyn, so. And then six.
Common Core.
Sorry.
Common Core.
Yes, Common Core, yes. Okay, nothing on that than that, so we'll move on to, full unfinished business, number one, planning a building ordinance, repealing and replacing ordinance 20-10, mobile food vending regulations, and it's the third reading.
Mayor, council, and Terry, like the mayor said, this is the third reading for the mobile food truck vending regulations, just steps out the parameters for our mobile trucks that we have around town. If you have any questions, you can answer them. Hunter is here also, the one that pretty much led the charge on this ordinance, very familiar with it. Once this is approved, then it'll be turned over to the basically code of work, and maybe we'll start enforcing the C ordinance after a great period, I'm sure, but.
Has he, y'all had any feedback or anything from vendors or anything?
I haven't. Hunter, have you had any?
I did a little bit, I gave, I made sure that, no, he's not a current vendor, but Mr. Van Gorder called and asked where we were on this particular ordinance, and because I think he has a thought of becoming a naughty vendor, he made it very clear, but a provider of a.
Food court.
Food court. So I asked him, or he came by one day to take care of a water bill, and I provided him for Charlotte, and he's looked at it, and his, his thought back to me was it was well written, so when you get that from Mr. Van Gorder, I think he would talk to someone, so he would appreciate that, so he had, he had good things to say. I'd like the motion to be, office ordinance, the third by ring. So, I don't know whether to do that. The third by ring?
Third on third reading, on column.
She's lagging because we still haven't got that, yeah, I don't. So we have a motion to say.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Or Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
And this food court?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's hear it. The ordinance for dealing and replacing ordinance 20-10 and regulating operation of mobile food vendors, mobile vendors, commission trailers, push carts in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, requirement, and the purpose.
All right, thank you. Number two is also Mr. Val, ordinance revealing and replacing ordinance 18-09 zoning regulations in third reading.
Yes, council, this is a revealing of the zoning ordinance taking 09, third reading. This is establishing and cleaning up some of the verbiage on our rezon in the procedure that it goes through the planning commission and then comes to the council. There's some verbiage in there such as notifying the people involved in the rezoning where we had, y'all had approved sending out by first-class mail instead of certified mail, things like that. This, so this is some of the things that have changed. Again, this is the third reading, we've been over this several, several months, if you have any questions, I'll be quite, quite answering for you. I think it's pretty self-implantatory, the confidence you have there shows that the changes, but Kenny wrote this ordinance, and instead of going through there and changing one word or a line, he made total changes, so it's like he's kind of saying where the changes were and what changes involved.
And nothing from last meeting, correct? No changes from last meeting, or was that?
No, there's, there's been no changes since the first reading.
Sure. I'd like the motion to put this ordinance on board, start the third reading by title of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to say.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Yeah, there was, the ordinance for dealing and replacing zoning ordinance, they can actually run out of the.
Thank you, council. Moving on to item number five, because of the switch, this is an ordinance annexing territory adjacent to 71 Highway in Tinsburg.
Order, order.
Yes.
Saying not this in three, or?
Oh, sorry, so, so, so sorry, yes, very good, but you're keeping me on task. Number three, since I switched to number, completely deleted, A.P. Commission, sorry, repeal and replace A.P. ordinance to expand definition of lodging type, second reading. Are you out of touch on that, or is?
I mean, yeah.
Remember that?
It's, it's nothing's changed.
Nothing's the same as the first one?
Still span the definition of hotel motel, spans it, including Airbnb.
Okay. Pretty good discussion last month on this, I think, it's kind of, I think my ducks in a row. Again, public, public announcement, we were, we were hoping to get more, more of this coming on our way, RDBs, that, or these food trucks and all that, we're hoping that all to the city, we're just trying to get everything in line.
And the current ones, we're hoping to start paying taxes?
That too. Yes, sir.
What, what are we doing to track down these folks that didn't come by a permit?
We have not yet, because we kind of want to get this in, but we, municipal, interestingly enough, had a full session on this, so we learned some things, we haven't put any of that in place yet, but it's, they didn't have any, they didn't tell you how to do that, but.
You know, just go to a website, sign up for one, and go walk the door.
When you search the area and get contact with them.
And to be honest with you.
I mean, who's responsible?
I'm mine.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm the ex-basico secretary of.
Danielle. And Danielle.
Actually, the policing of it, thank you, TT. Do what now?
And he said, Danielle. I don't, yeah, and to be honest with you, it's not that much difference in sunburnt water, you just have to do your due diligence to get out there and do what you do, but these are different codes than that, and they're not, they're not big neon signs, so.
I might send one of these guys with a badge and a gun up there, whatever you're doing.
Well, that, eventually it'll probably work its way down to code, unfortunately, we'll do that, since Casey's not here.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to place this ordinance on for the third reading, right?
Second.
Second reading, my problem. On second.
The motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
And Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
And others?
All right.
The ordinance for dealing and replacing ordinance number 07-15, providing some levy of a local gross to each category, gross receipts of lodging facilities at a rate of 1% restaurants within the city, the Greenwood Arts operated in Abercrombie, yes, number 11.
Thank you. Trying to get my numbers, number five, skipping number four, reversing. Ordinance annexation, annexing territory adjacent to 71 Highway in Tinsburg, first reading. Although I would like for you to consider on this particular one, to begin with, adopting the decision if you're so inclined, waiting second, third, but obviously this is up for some discussion or deeper consideration. And there's maps, let's see, you have maps attached or in your.
I have three of those, color.
Yep. This is an overhead view, I think it was taken today, recently, no? Within, just an overhead view?
Yeah, just satellite image.
Satellite image. And you probably have a colored map, and then another one, that's step highlight, highlighting the area, specific area. And it is Mr. Burton's property, as you can see. He has, you have applied for petition, you're hearing, I believe, 7/13 of this month, is that correct? Okay. And I was just waiting on here, it said that there was the, another proposed annexation of another portion of that area, is that already kind of time table on that, is there any kind of?
Yeah, I'll hop in.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I got petition for annexation.
Tell us your.
How this goes.
Thank you.
So we had petition initially for three parcels, which are the ones closest to that, and we admit our petitions have a better portion, so now it's six. So the proposed is along with the original.
Okay, so it is going to be, proposed and pending?
Yes, sir, thank you.
And is there some urgency or want me to try to put it on for emergency readings? I think you're, like, everybody at chance to. Well, the, this one, the annexation is imperative to do anything further on properties, for sure, they have, they, one is the library, for sure, and Jeff, or, I'm sorry, Jeff Turner was to be here tonight to speak on that, and he's not able to attend due to a health issue. So the library's trying to make a decision whether they, whether they're going to do what they have talked to Mr. Burton about doing, same as correctly, and then they have other entities or amenities, I guess, that are, there is a timeframe on that.
There's a, a commercial development that has a timeline associated with it, and annexation is part of that, the buildings.
So, and as you seen on your, on your, the reason that was reversed, inadvertently got the, on their four and five mixed up, to discuss water service area, we know that this property needs to be annexed, so both of these things hinge on each other, obviously, and they both depend, or have contingencies on when it's annexed, or the approval of the annexation, I guess, and the release of a judge, who I've spoken to, he's ready to note that's what we are, so.
What was the time?
I think, I think you have, are you into 30 days, into a 40 or 60 day?
The time, time.
Is that what you're asking?
I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is.
I'm not asking for emergency.
Well, first, we've seen that, it's all for me, so what I'm saying is, I mean, can we put it on with title, with the first reading, something we've probably never done before, and then it's where it works out, the second reading, can we do the emergency clause then, if we need, if we need time, we've never done that and not tendered setting up here.
Right.
You can't do that, maybe, yes.
You can?
Yes.
Okay, well, I was going to say that, give us, just out of all respect, just.
Yeah, it would still be 30 days anyway, I think even if we waited, they waited the second, third anyway, right before it became. Is that what you're asking?
Or wait in the reading, not the emergency.
Right.
I'm talking about, I'm not saying, not, I'm just saying, give us till next, till the next meeting, then we can wait, if we need to wait then, you know, so it gives us 30 days to, to look at this, I mean, we just have it.
Does that interfere? I mean, and I don't want everything to hinge on this, but I, but I do.
Well, I understand, I understand, I see it, in all due respect to us sitting up here too, I guess, I mean, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, and I respectfully understand what you're saying, but I would say that this is something that we've all been trying to get done, or ever since that became, and I'll just say in front of the property owner, he knows it's a mess out there, so we're trying to get it annexed so it can become underneath, that's not the only reason we're getting that, and I told, I told Mr. Burton, I said, "You better get ready, because when it's annexed, you're in city limits, you now are going to be high on some city," so that, that's.
That's kind of my question, but I'd like to comment, since this has been a hot button topic for, you know.
We have an opportunity to.
We'll fix it, yeah. You know, once we annex it in, I don't, what does that all mean to us, you know? I mean, we've had all these discussions about, you know, digging dirt, digging deals, and bonds, and permits, and whatever, over.
You got to combine.
You know, so, you know, we're kind of right in the middle of the project there.
Well, he'll still, I mean, suddenly you want to speak on that, or for Hunter, I don't know who, you're sure the fish.
What is the question?
What, what happens, I think, if I'm right, what happens with this is annexed, and what happens, what does he have to not comply with?
Yeah, I mean, what you say, now you got to go follow this, this ordinance about excavating and bonds and all about.
Same thing, same thing he's doing over.
You remember when Andy, Andy Hall became annexed, with this project, I don't tell you one, that Mr. Burton will follow up the same, or he'll have that permit, he'll have to be bonded, you know, he will be inspected and saw it out, you know, and make sure that this project moves on, and, you know, we, like you said, well, this has been a hot button for a long time, and we've talked about it, and, and it's always kind of, well, we can't do anything about it because it's not in city limits, now you have the opportunity to bring it into city limits, and we can continue on with our business. They're on a timeline with some commercial property that's going to be very advantageous for the city, and I would hate to tell you that, that we missed that, that window of opportunity, not only with the commercial property, but with the, the library and things like that, so it's just a point of, we, we've reached a point that it's time to move forward on it, and we've got the opportunity to do that, we've got a, a willing developer, we've got a county judge that is willing to help in this process, and, and it would be good for the city.
My, I have one question, these maps are, the city map maps, a little bit misleading, but this, this property question does, is adjacent to current city?
Yes, highway Tinsburg is in the city limits, and it is continuing to the highway Tinsburg.
Not, not property as, as yet.
Right.
But the highway for sure.
It has also been approved by our, it's on G.I.S., they look at that and make sure that it is legal, and so they have given their blessing on it, and so that's the reason why we're ready to move forward. Obviously, done a lot of work on this, and with the, with the legals, and getting this in front of, just touching the county for, for their approval, and again, it is just a good time to go forward on it.
Well, I kind of like Lance's proposal, you know, I mean, given that, you know, this is the first time it's placed upon us, and just to, again, give us, you know, a chance to have, you know, 30 days to look over, have anybody develop it, address it or whatever, unless there is some type of timeline that we need to be aware of.
Come on, shut up.
Ms. Garner is, who, come, I'm, tell us, you're.
I'm Cheryl Garner, and I'm a realtor with Keller Williams, I'm also working with a developer to market the property, but to put together a master plan for the property, and I wanted to provide you guys, this may or may not be the first time that you've seen the brochure on the master plan for this development, I've got a copy for each of you.
Big card.
Big card, that will. So a couple of years ago, as we were working with this and macking it out, one of, one of the things that, the timing of quite, quite before you now, is because all of the property has been finally acquired, that borders Tinsburg, Highway 71, and then Cedar Valley, so previous to, that, that was all acquired finally in January, so that allowed us to move forward with, with going into contract with various developments. So this development is about 36 acres, that's what you're looking at in terms of annexation, and we have this master plan, we worked with Michael Jean, who put this together, so Michael really is the one that put this brochure together and this master plan, so it's a mixed-use development, which in the world of development and economic development, to have a master plan for a community in terms of a commercial master plan is an extremely valuable asset. This development competes with Chatty Crossing, it competes more strongly on some levels than Chatty Crossing, because this particular thoroughfare right here is one of the most heavily trafficked areas in this region of the country. So between, on Rogers Avenue, between Waldron and 74th Street, is our highest traffic count in this region. This is our second highest traffic count. So if you're a, a commercial developer, and you're looking for where you would go, this traffic count right here catches the eye of even regional or national. even regional or national entities. So that's what we're beginning to do, is catch the attention of regional and national development. And that's what we have right here that's under contract for this. So in the map that you have, lots eight and nine are what we're talking about that's currently under contract. So they come in, they do their site work, and of course, annexation is critical because you've got to provide fire suppression, utilities, other city services. So that's very important. And then, of course, the library is planned to go in this area, lots ten and eleven. We previously looked at dividing it up, but the library, I believe, is going to take all of that space, which is about two and a half. So as you look at the color coded this, the beige was planned to be office buildings or medical type buildings. But as it turns out, this the first one that's going to go in is a quick start restaurant. So these are color coded restaurants are green, multi-story buildings are red, and that's commercial on the bottom. There'll be multi-story, two to three story. So you'll have residential lock pipe residences on the top. So quick start restaurant at the corner of Highway 71 in Cedar Valley is planned to be a high-end convenience store, not just a regular convenience store, but a high-end convenience store. And what is the yellow is multifamily. Previous to or just just prior to COVID, we had a hotel entity that was looking at going where this yellow is next to thirteen. So we're just now starting beginning to market that again. So just at the beginning of COVID, we pretty much had this lined up. And then as COVID hit, we just lost every one of them. So we're just now getting back to where we were with regard to development. We've got someone strongly interested in one and two. We've got eight and nine under contract, ten and eleven is the library, and we're under discussions right now with six and seven. And so, any questions?
This road is West Gate Street, and I guess I would just add, you know, not only that, you've got this, you know, the entrance there off Tinsburg and the development of the new stoplight that's potentially coming in. They're talking about changing this intersection. We just have R dot and all those people going.
Yes.
Is that doable?
Is it doable? Yes. But to answer that thoroughly, it's currently under review with R dot, and the developer is working with Brixton Engineering. And I think they're representing the developer in the discussions with R dot on on the in Brixton Express right there.
All indications from R dot two on the line itself is even though they've not completely finished that, or I have not seen that diagram, is saying that that hope for whatever it's worth at this point will not change. Obviously, that that not yield label and access link on Tinsburg go on will, but not supposedly not the main power, so according to them.
Is this a road here by four, or what does that come across?
Well, one of the cool things that I didn't talk about is this this thirty six acres is amenity rich. And so Art's Creek actually that flows through from the town, it starts over here, and then it goes through the property, and it comes out across Highway 71, and then it flows back around. And so this will actually, if you flip through your brochure, you can see that this is actually a water feature. It's not really a river walk, but it's a little mini water feature that will be a part of this. So this is a walkable community. It's it's rich with amenities in that it'll have this light, it'll have a splash pad. There's an amphitheater in it as you as you look through your brochure. So literally what you're looking at, those photographs are the three D images of with the dimensions that are mapped out on this side from here. The yellow in the back here is multifamily. So it'll be a high-end multifamily.
Is there someone who is going to I mean, build all this infrastructure, the roads, the I mean, the plan, I love it. I mean, I love the plan, but.
So it's organic.
Is it?
So a lot of times you'll have a development come in, and they'll put in all the infrastructure, and that'll be it. So when I say organic, that means as these are sold, it will be developed in phases. So for example, in the near term, it will the the infrastructure will be developed around this, this section right here up until the fountain. So now that that could change. It just when I say organic, it depends on the market and how quickly you sell these lots out. So the developer currently, the revenue streams for the developer at this point is to literally sell land. So I don't think the developer's going to get rich on this, but it's it's a land development. The city stands to gain much more from this development than the developer.
In the long in the long run. Well, I didn't.
And is the developer?
Uh huh.
The the West Gate Street, is that already a a marked exit and entrance off of seventy one? So you don't have to acquire that or get that approved?
Grandmother didn't.
Okay.
That's already that already exists, that?
Yes. It's a paved entrance.
There, like where that house was?
No, to this side.
This side.
South of the house. At the end of the on-ramp, you can see a paved entrance. That's that street.
Okay.
This has not been discussed with anyone, but to the extent anyone else would like to participate with the infrastructure, it could be done more quickly.
One thing I was just concerned with is that when we were looking at the property down, you know, out of where we have the proposed fire station action. Now, before that, when it was a church looking to get in there, you know, we were kind of looking at an access road, and they said that, and I can't remember what, but there had to be a certain, you know, feet.
Distance?
Up, yeah, from that the intersection there. I mean, I just kind of was wondering if they're, you know, if that, you know, meets in that defined limit, or if that road needs to be pushed back to the very kind of edge of the property, you know.
Talking about right here.
Yeah, yes. Because I don't know what that, aren't you, you recall that, you know, if that was.
They do have they do have guidelines for how what the setback is away from the intersection. I just with the projects that I've worked with, I think this is within that. I mean, it's directly across the street from the Parthenide, which is equidistant from the intersection. So this is an economic asset that Greenwood has that most communities would die of. It's a bad way to Greenwood. The traffic count here might exist an asset. You've got a developer who is not ad hoc wanting development to go on here. This has architectural controls that have been developed by M I H T. So there's a stater that will be set with this development. And so this thirty days make a difference in the world of development. It does. Could we get by with another thirty days of you guys considering whether you wanted to bring this into Greenwood? We probably could get by with it. It would just slow things down. And there's a lot of momentum right now with a lot of discussions that we're having. And, you know, we're under contract to perform. So there's a lot of things that have to take place once we're annexed. So, you know, I I would I would ask, is there a reason not to annex it?
I heard a question. So we so we move forward this, is the developer have any expectations of she may fund it along the utilities, the city services, that type of thing in order this, you know, you say you have a a contract on this lots seven and eight or whatever.
Yeah, nine and eight.
Is there a is there an expectation from the city if we do go ahead and annex this for us to provide those services?
Yes, sir. So the next.
A timeframe is what I'm what I'm trying to say.
So, yeah, the next item on the agenda is just that it is is to provide access to utilities. It's not, yes, for us to, obviously, in very plain words, is to begin where we ended with our extension to Tractor Supply, to extend that approximately two hundred feet down the road, and then to cross under or go underneath Tinsburg, and to get it on Mr. Burton's property or the water service to access to him, not not getting it through his property, which Burton's intentions, if I'm right, to extend from that point on down all the way to the property, which is not what you're asking. But yes, there is definitely that.
So that's going to be a dispens to us.
Absolutely. And you have you have those numbers in it. If you want to jump forward to, there is that information that they're for in the next. What we're trying to do is just accept the annexation, but you're totally right.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, I understand that, but but is there a?
A timeline on that.
Because the way annexation reads through all the time is that in a reasonable amount of time, we've never come up with that reasonable amount of time, because if that's the case, Shadow Lake should have been.
Right.
Or the city Greenwood thirty years ago.
Right.
So I'm just wondering if we're under the gun as far as y'all have this contract.
You're you're are you asking me if if we accept the to accept the annexation?
That we're immediately going to have to.
Well, that's.
We're going to have to start spending money.
Yep.
To get.
Services.
Services to this piece of property, but we've got other pieces of the property we don't have services to that we annexed a few years ago. So that's my question. Like that Highway ten, where the new highways, where the new high pass is going to go, our our water service is in to the search and address. We haven't put any pipes around there. I mean, there's plenty of rooms for development out there.
Right.
Because it's not there. I I don't want to set a precedent so that we're going to annex this piece of property and all set for you and throw the pipes in the ground. Just.
Well, the reason is, we don't, we have an ordinance ourselves that that actually allows a little black wheeling at the bottom, that there's an ordinance that says, we won't annex unless we there is a water. You're not, you are not to annex, or you're not to provide services outside of City Limits. So we're trying to get our duck to get it in order of.
I I know that, but I'm just saying, like Highway ten, we're going to, we're going to skip. We don't have any of our services after those other people out there that we annexed several years ago.
Sure.
So.
All right, let me ask you this. When you're in this particular piece of property, we're we're not really laying, I mean, we're not doing anything for the city. I mean, as far as laying water to super line, infrastructure, I would assume the developer is going to build those roads connecting to our tie across seventy one.
Right.
And they have to lay the infrastructure.
We're we're suggesting, we have, what we're going to talk to you about is getting water to him, coming to do what I just described, knowing that two hundred feet, just like we did on Highway ten, when we extended it to Tractor Supply, is to extend it on down two hundred feet and cross the road, and then and then it's for him to tie on to. And we have, by the way, in case we're worried about funds, we have a million dollars this shy, two hundred thousand dollars shy of a million dollars, setting a general fund from Arco for water waste water infrastructure. But but I I understand where you're coming from, too. We have some that aren't that we haven't followed up yet, or haven't done that. But we don't have a plan to develop it either.
Right. But I'm just I'm just just saying.
Yeah, no, I because it kind of goes back to the whole, not everybody in town's got sewer, that's a whole other.
Right.
Whole other conversation.
But I, you know, I think I would, you know, and maybe after a little bit of what Lance was saying, you know, the gentleman, I mean, I love it. I love the development. I'm not trying to be negative about about saying any of this. It's the the next item, and I'm looking at this water wastewater report about our acquisition of things for service area, the cost to the city.
Report from the general.
Yes.
I would say that that's very skewed.
Well, let me talk about that a little bit.
Wait just a minute.
Let me, you said skewed, I don't want to answer that.
No, it wasn't. It's a question I was going to say.
Okay.
Tell us who you are.
The million dollars.
Seriously, I need you to tell us who you are.
Okay, John Bennett, Michigan Water, Wastewater. The million dollar estimate was my solid on the agenda, annexing North Tinsburg. I thought we were talking about annexing everything back. And if we don't annex everything back.
We are, we already talked about that.
We could get by with just using their existing line at a much lower cost. But if we annex everything to Burton property back, we'll hopefully want to bring it up to, you know, eight inch lines, fire hydrants, all that stuff. Jeremy Short did a count on all the pipe that the Jankor passed in that area. It's ninety six hundred feet according to what Jeremy came up with. Andrew made that ninety six hundred feet of two and three is pipe to place at our eight inch, so we can get fire flows and get fire hydrants. And it's rocky, you got across a couple of roads, got across a bunch of driveways and stuff. It'll cost a little over a million dollars to get the water in there, you know, eight inch line and fire hydrants. It will cost more than a million dollars.
But that's the area that used to Burton's.
That's correct. To Burton's property, the cost against plumbing line, Tractor Supply down a hundred some odd feet and across a hundred sixty seven thousand nine hundred. A good, that's a good estimate according to Jeremy Short, and plus the existing costs, about two hundred forty some odd thousand dollars to get the lot, to acquire Burton's property and get the water to it. Good news, you already have sewer there. Bad news on sewer, I think we can commit to to serving all the commercial stuff, at least anything proposed in the library. I talked to Jeremy Short today. We're going to start the sewer model on the way, wait a couple of years, probably start next month or two. I think the report I had a year, Jeremy, I talked to you after I did the report, it's been finished in six months. We may want to hold off on the presidential committee to provide sewer until we get that report back, just see if we can or at what cost. But we can do that, about two hundred forty one thousand just for that, but Boston had lots of east work, but it's going to be part of that, it'll cost a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. The reason I said it was skewed is because Mr. Bailey voted in that meeting, and he doesn't even, he's not even allowed to vote in for it. It's our own files under commission. So the vote was unanimous by the Water Waste Water Commission. I don't know, I think there's some, maybe one here from that, if you want to speak on that. And what you heard was a personal opinion, not the opinion of the Water Waste Water Commission.
So the completion.
So all that being said, I'm not opposed to this. I just, you know, you know what I'm saying? That's all. That's all I'm I'm not.
Well, so I I understand. I'm sorry, wait.
Well, the only thing I was going to say about that, I didn't even start a button there, but is, you know, I'm your biggest fan. I hope that I think that's great. If that develops, that's definitely great. I'm just looking for some comfort level, I guess, is, you know, and I know none of you have that. I'm sure you would love to have that.
I did want to address the economic impact on the expenditure. It is a planned development in just with a couple of these restaurants, specifically four, I calculated four. Four would generate even one percent IMP and two percent sales tax. Just four of these would generate about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So that's just with the current sales tax that we have. So within, I mean, three hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, within a year, it would pay for whatever infrastructure would.
I mean, it's obviously a calculated risk on our part, right, for the for the city to say, we're going to go lay money out.
Same as we did for Tractor Supply.
Calculated risk projected as well. That's what I mean. It's for everybody.
So so to your point, Mary, Tractor Supply was one into two. I I recently met with one of the bankers, the president of the bank in Fort Smith, that said, he looked at this and said, this is a hundred million dollar development. And and it is when we get this all built out.
What do you, you have any feel at all for the timeline to be built out?
Well, it's kind of from a developers, I've done economic development, and I do commercial real estate. So once you get one thing started, in in this case, two things. commercial real estate, so, once you get one thing started, in, in this case, two things, and maybe three improvements, once you get that started and that developer has those, that organic growth and starts to put this infrastructure in, then it starts to go. People are sitting here watching to see what you guys do tonight, we've got development that's just looking to see what you do, they're looking to see, is this council going to support this, or not? Because right now, it doesn't have sewer services, it doesn't have fire protection, it doesn't have water, so, it can't move forward. So, I think it was through the signal that you guys are looking at it even to annex it, you know? I mean, it's going to send a signal that says, "Hey, I don't know."
Mayor, just another one of the deals, how we could sum up some of the tactics I could give to-
We, we don't have anything in place like we did, you know, we did that on that line, that line was, that, that was specific to that line, so we don't have anything in place on this one, as of now, uh, and of course, once it starts, we have to have a hard time coming back to doing it, but, uh-
You know, I mean, I just-
Sure. Well, the review-
And what we're going, is that this developer, when he puts in all of this infrastructure, that water will be to the other side of this, if Greenwood wanted to keep going.
Yeah, so-
So, you would take the bayage-
So, what's the distance there, Jeff, across your park, from, from one end, where you would tie on and we brought it across to the other end, give or take?
1,900 feet.
So, 1,900 feet that Mr. Burton would put in the bayage, he's required to put in eight inch, correct? And so, we've had a discussion, a little bit of discussion about, uh, that, that extends, that gives us, is, is, we've all sat here at this table and talked about going north, young men, right, trying to, trying to annex and get, get our, he would extend that 1,900 feet, now the eight inch line, and I talked to Mr. Posey, he's here, Mr. Posey informed me, because I told him, I said, "It's a loaded question, Tim, and you could answer it correctly if I'm wrong." If we could tie on to a 12 inch line, to his eight inch line with a 12 on that end, it'd kind of be okay, but the, but the prudent thing to do would possibly be to upgrade Mr. Burton's line to a 12 and go all the way down, if, if, if our desire is to continue on with more development, I mean, that, that's 1,900 feet of, and I don't know what that cost at that rate. Anyway, that's, that's a bonus for us to get 1,900 feet in my, in my book.
That would be a big bonus. I mean, I would add, if we could get him to put, we could run the 12 inch up to him and he takes the 12 inch the rest away at his expense, that would be a big bonus.
That's what we do, yeah, thank you.
Well, I think, uh, again, just, uh, seeing us extend, you know, water to sewer to, uh, to Tractor Supply, and all the development that happened after we, you know, got there and there, you know, I, I think, uh, yes, like Cheryl says, it's, uh, water to sewer is, uh, you know, essential, you know, for development. And, uh, yeah, we've been trying to annex, you know, north of, uh, Greenwood for, for a while now, and so, uh, but it's like I said, you know, uh, it was a chicken or the egg, you know what I'm saying, you know, the land has to be annexed first before we can extend, you know, city services to it, so I think that, uh, you know, yeah, I think we need to go ahead and look forward to getting the, uh, annexation, I just don't know, like I said, if they're involved. Again, when we did the other annexation, we did, you know, studies and everything like that, and it was just a long, drawn out process, and, and I, I would still like to say that, you know, we just let anybody that wants to, you know, know that we're doing it, and just give them 30 days, you know, just to, anybody to express anything.
Well, we're talking about 36 acres only right now, and, and the gentleman that has the degree, Jared, is already, he's already, he's annexing himself, and this is not us trying to get him to annex.
Right.
This is the opposite of what we tried to do before, now, we'll discuss this other section, this other 52, 53, 55, usually is a different, different ballgame, but he, he's asking, he's already petitioning, so you don't have to do those studies, I mean, I understand, I was, you know, I remember that, and it's very painstaking, but he's, he's doing it himself, so, again, I think it's just-
There's different, our obligations, like, you know, the plans you touched on a little bit, someone asking to be annexed and us forcibly annex, our obligations are different.
Right.
Mayor, yes, my deal wasn't, and probably paid, but we've had a gentleman here in town that's building a business out here that's trying to services, or no sewer, out of the road, I don't feel that they got it all worked out or not, he's putting in his, his business across town over here.
Yeah, we do, we're, we're worked, yeah, that is worked out, yes.
I didn't, you know what I'm saying, that was the kind of, and I just want to make sure that, you, you see what I'm, and I didn't-
Sure, I didn't, I didn't realize what you, yes, that has been worked out, no.
I called him in the bus.
Yeah, no, he's, he's good, he, the only question that still remains, not a question, the timing for him is that sewer line, because the easement was just been obtained, they worked very, they worked together, they, he and Alf Packaging, hey, it's a reason, so, that, yeah, that's a little, but that's, that's worked out.
That's why I said, just want to make sure, basically.
Yeah.
That's it for James, and that's the annexation, Mayor, I make the motion that we place it on the first reading by title.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, so you place it on, uh, first reading by title.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
And Adams? An ordinance annexing certain real property, with the city, with the Supreme of Arkansas, signed with state awards and legal rights.
Make a motion to be laid in the second and third reading.
Okay.
Motion second to lay in the second and third reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Yes, sir, we do have to do that.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance.
Thank you.
The motion second to adopt.
Do we need to do emergency clause?
Not, not, I didn't even-
30 days.
If you want, you can, I didn't ask for it, hold it.
Okay, now, I remember.
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. An agent's flag.
The other flag.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. All right, so, uh, that was number five, so we go to number four.
Yeah.
Outfits.
This is a resolution approving acquisition of certain water rights owned by James Fork Rural Resources.
I'm going to need somebody that'll know if Hamby wants to touch this or not, but we're going to need some really awesome definition of water rights for me to have any part of this $79,000. Personally, I have just one vote. Because everybody knows my feelings on water rights, we went through this, we tried to annex all this before, which I'm not sure why everything, or the Tinsper wasn't included in this annex tonight, but anyway, uh, the Attorney General of Arkansas believes, gave us a couple of definitions of how bay water rights are, I don't think we're crossing any James Fork lines that are in the ground right now, if we go under, from where our lines are currently under, Tinsper, I'm guessing that one house that used to be there, I don't know if the line was up 15, what, 150 feet above where Stallings lived, is gone, I guess he might have been on James Fork border up there, but those lines are long gone. I just need somebody to really persuade young, who's, why we have to pay for water rights.
Why we have to pay for water?
I guess it's the definition of water rights, because there, there's, I mean, their map probably says this there, but I can draw you back here in about five minutes if it's all right.
I'm all right, I'm not sure that will look anywhere, but, yeah.
Well, they didn't have that, they didn't hold that much water in James Fork, I mean, it didn't ride very good. Well, unfortunately, it doesn't.
Well, uh-
So, all of this is pending on Arkansas National Resources?
To Daniel's point, the governing agency in Arkansas has water rights, it's the Arkansas Natural Resource Commission, so they have maps that designate water rights, so, that's, that's why, if it's in one territory, that's why you have to acquire them from the other agency. I don't know, the Arkansas Natural Resource Commission, I may have in my phone the definition for me, I would love for it, but that's the authority that determines who has the water. So, everything we do with water rights will be subject to both the ANRC and the USDA World Development, they'll have to approve the acquisition.
There is a strong opinion about water rights. Like, one, I think you're such a pres, I mean, you're obviously going to say, whatever we do with this sets a precedent for what's going to happen next down the road, because, their, their map, you know, and I think they're right, I mean, years, years back when it was established as, uh, South Sebastian County Water Resources Association, right, I was part of the group that created the Franklin Sebastian Water Program. And you have to go, if you're going to Arkansas Natural Resources, and the, the entity at the ballpark, and say, "I'm going to provide water," you know, in the case that we were over there, we're going to go all the way to Franklin County. Okay, give me a map of where you're going to do that, and so we had to create a map, and said, "This will be the service area to the sewer." Okay, well, you know, I guess in theory, maybe in fact, I don't know, if, if your water service area changes, if they were giving funding to provide water to that area, and then they no longer have the area, what happens? Where does the funding go? But, I, I'm like you, I mean, it's a, it's a sore subject with me, uh, especially it's a sore subject with me in this case, because we are going to go turn around and buy the water from James Fork. It's not that we're going to buy your water service area and provide water, we're going to, we're going to buy and buy the water from you, but I think that makes, I point this to be on this ordinance, needs to be very clearly defined about, what are we going to buy in the next five years, and what's the price? I mean, I don't, I don't think if, if, none of us may be sitting here in five years, that you agree to that, and somebody says, "Well, it's a million dollars an acre," that you don't need, I don't think you're going to, but, but I think we ought to clearly mutually understand for both sides, I've said James Fork, before we ever do that, what's the deal with that service area in the next five years, and what's the price?
You're talking about federal level roads?
Yes.
The area east, which I guess Mr. Bailey was referring to earlier.
So, there's two different, uh, the ANRC has a calculation, methodology for formulating the acquisition cost where there's existing infrastructure and customers, and so, Jeremy Shores took that formula and used the guidelines of the ANRC and formulated what that would be based on both the acquisition of the infrastructure and also, uh, the other things to the calculation is the revenue that's lost, James Fork's revenue loss, so those are the two different factors that go into that calculation.
Is that what was used to come up with 79,000? No, it was not.
So, there's two different things on, uh, raw land, where there is no customer and no infrastructure, it's really a negotiation, that was negotiated.
Yeah, if I have to address, Jeremy did a calculation, he sent it just before the meeting, at early of our meeting, I turned it over to him, and he didn't really go over it, which is kind of surprising, uh, his calculation, although my memory, which reminds me, is a little dangerous, for the customers, it was a little over $200,000. Then he had this 96, that's what I got, 9,600 feet, he did a calculation, 9,600 feet of two or three inch, how much that cost, it's like $160,000, but then, during the meeting, determined that was 34 years old, and put it at 80 acres. Oh, thank you, thank you, it was, uh, 166,000 for the infrastructure, but there's a depreciation at 34 years of age, which is, is $24,930 for the pipe that we were basically getting rid of, that, that's nothing to deal, and-
Wait a minute, are you talking about the 36 acres of the part east right now?
The part east, the 36 acre, 36 acres, $22,000 an acre, what, from now, put in my court, that's it, that's it, and the rest has nothing to do with Burton, pump up the stuff east. There's two parts to this calculation, one is for the customers, $24,000, $49,344 for 53 customers, and then for the infrastructure, the 166,000, 200, but, that was, it was new, for his, for what he provided us, depreciation, and then in 34 years, that would go down from 166, 200 to 24,930, total would be 229,000 some odd dollars, but that was not mentioned in the meeting, it was given to us and then not, maybe was it discussed at all? No, it was not discussed at all, so that's what Jeremy-
Capital, but not by the 36.
Yeah, Jeremy Shores prepared this and then it was not discussed, that's not measured at the price, it could be better or worse.
But there is a defined way to calculate it per the ANRC.
And it is federal law that hopefully sets this, ANRC, in my opinion, and you're the lawyer, Mike, it's the federal law that reigns supreme on it, that gives it the right, the state is law, but, you know, you lose out to federal, so really, the state's now almost like congestion, might be.
I mean, this thing here, this two A, this ordinance says, you know, "We're going to buy this, blah, 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 within a five year period, a cost of acquisition to be mutually agreed upon, and subject to the annexation of such property located on such street, blah, blah, blah," uh, and we're by Arkansas Natural Resources. I guess, I, I think we shouldn't leave that open at this stage, I mean, as we do this, if that's part of this agreement, we're going to buy the water service area, we're going to extend the contract, and we're going to deal with this part to the east, well, let's go ahead and define what that means, right now, before we agree to it, let's define what it is, let's all mutually agree right now.
Well, I think we, we can't really do that, I mean, because we've been, uh, trying to do this with, you know, James Fork, with Milltown, Washburn, you know, and water rights, and, uh, and we always kind of still get stuck high center, and, uh, and I, I think, again, Section B, uh, we need, it's like, anything can be negotiated, you know, uh, down the road, and stuff, you know, it's, it's all contingent on, we're, we're going to annex it, no, if, if, if we propose an annexation and it passes, or what, so, you know, there's a lot of variables in that, uh, in, in that.
Well, if we agree though, I mean, if we agree to the 20 year contract extension and the purchase of these water rights-
It's actually, I may not agree, right, it's, you have, you have 12, they're adding 12 years on your rights.
We add 12, 13 years, something like that, you're right. If, if we agree to those two things, we have no leverage up there for negotiating this price, right?
You have to agree to those two to get the 2200 acre for this property.
Right.
Right. But, and, and I'm not saying that's a fight, I'm not saying that we have a disagreement with James Fork, I'm just saying, the prudent thing for us to do as a body is to, go talk to James Fork and say, "Hey, what, let's put a number on this thing," so that somebody who are sitting here in the future, or sitting there in the future, doesn't have to have this debate.
Well, I, I think it's that, again, you really can't put a number on something, you know, uh, in five years, because, uh, well, uh, one, if I'm the seller, I'm going to shoot real high, you know, if I'm the provider, I'm going to try to shoot real low, because I don't know what, I don't know how much interest rate you're going to be in five years.
Cheryl was talking about.
To, to this calculation, there's two, two basic variables, uh, and one's really not a variable, it's factual, John said it, it's, you take the, uh, infrastructure, how much would it cost if it was new, and then you depreciate it out, and that's pretty like and white, so, uh, it's pretty old. So, uh, it's pretty old, I don't know how old it is, but it's.
And the meaning is, I think you said nineteen eighty-eight, I think's when he said he thought it was put in.
I mean, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe all we need to do is word this to say, the price of this will be calculated using that formula. Well, for not like that formula.
And the other variable, so that's really not a variable, it's, uh, going to be somewhere probably around less than thirty thousand dollars. And I think because of that depreciated infrastructure, they're motivated to want to get rid of this infrastructure. I think it's part of their motivation, I think they're motivated.
They want to get rid of it for some reason, I don't know what the reason is, but having that with them, they do want to get rid of it for some reason.
Because they can't provide any more of it.
That's part of it.
And the other variable, there's, the other variable is, uh, the, the timeframe, this is sort of the negotiating point, I would think, uh, is how many years that you use in your calculation for their loss of revenue. Do you use one year loss of revenue? If you do, we owe them ten thousand dollars. If you use twenty years, it's two hundred and four thousand. So, that, to me, that's a negotiated variable, that's where they would negotiate, is on how many years would go into their loss of revenue. But, to John's point, I think they're motivated.
Here's my point, let's, let's, how about people put the chicken before the egg? Let's say the people start coming in, developing houses, hotels, fast foods, a fountain, all that stuff, and they call down Jamesport and say, hey, we need some water up here, we got all these buildings going up, we need water. Well, we can't provide that, we don't have big enough lines. So, then the next call is going to be to Greenwood, hey, we need water. Okay, we'll run you two hundred foot over there and we're good to go. So, he'll think some judge somewhere is going to say, yeah, I want to run a favor of Greenwood because they have water and they have a supply.
Well, I guess it's up to your appetite, do you want to get into a legal?
Absolutely. I love legal, I don't think you do.
It depends, can you document, can you get them to document they can't serve? You might be right, but can you document? And you might be, it would be, it would be tough. You'd have to have someone grow up in the QT and talk with them, and then they'd say something, and they'd match around, and then all back saying, this is what you told us, and it'd still be, you'd go for what you do.
How big are their wives in the ground around up there?
Yeah.
How big are their?
They have a twelve inch.
Yeah, yeah.
They have twelve inches across the road.
Jamesport does.
Yeah. On your property?
On the property.
Yeah.
If it goes.
This is for, you never heard of it?
Well, I've heard three inches, I think it goes so, it's across the road, and then it goes three inches along, parallel to the road.
He knows, he knows that.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Lot four, I think.
Well, that changes the whole argument.
It does.
All of them have two-inch lines, all they got come up.
Well, they do once they come across parallels. As far as the time period, it came out during the meeting that Fort Smith, they, they modeled here for Fort Smith, and then for the existing customers, Jamesport got half the revenue for twenty years, so the twenty-year period, and Ja- Jamesport got a lot, we're talking about paying a lot more money for it at that time. But, it was a twenty-year period of Fort Smith, just as a reference.
Can I say something absolutely? Again, it's my bad, that's. Based on the comment you just said, Jamesport's engineer said they can serve water for that entire area. And all they have to do is tell the developer, we can serve you water, you may have to go all the way to our lake and run a bigger line, it's your cost, but we can serve you water. And, and that's how that works. So, that, that's not going to come up, the fact that they can't, may not have enough infrastructure there, they will place that on the developer, which, which would kill anything because no one, no one could, uh, it's kind of what we got into with Cracker Supply, Cracker Supply was beginning to lie, and, uh, that's why we cost share with them.
Well, my whole argument was the fact that all we've heard since I've been up here for fifteen years is that they only have two-inch lines, and up to this point, there's nowhere they can get fire suppression, anything.
Going down, uh, Ten Spur, coming into town, up the Rockside Drive in that area, uh, around Crook Enterprises, all that, that is true, out of seventy-one, twelve inches.
And it comes across a twelve-inch line, I think they upgraded that when, when they four-lane, it used to be a smaller line, but then, when it comes across twelve inches, and then a three, there's a three inch that goes to the right, back towards Greenwood, and three inch goes, you know, to the left, toward Fort Smith. It goes three inch to, I think, Hill Rock, Hilltop? Then Hilltop goes two inches up, and two inches further east, and Hilltop, the rest is Greenwood. But it is a twelve inch right across, and that would give them ability to serve, but they don't do fire suppression, so, they could probably serve the municipal water supply. Clark.
I guess what, and my concern, I guess why I'm saying all that, is this is the stuff lawsuits in that, you know? And I just want to make sure we're doing it right, and we're covering our patients. I don't want to be sitting up here in three years with everybody in a fight. Alex, you want to?
I mean, I'm listening. I, I, I agree a hundred percent, I've only known for two reasons. One, that the price is not set, the same, exact same reason you're talking about. I mean, that is what makes people in Mr. Handy's profession rich, is that type of thing. So, I think we need to get the price set, and I want to get, if we're going to get a contract extension, I want to get more areas additional from Ten Spur. I'll have these stuff to the side. And that's the two reasons I voted out, what?
Who came up with this? Who came up with the renovation?
Well, it was, uh, it was based on, uh, the joint meeting between the Jamesport Board and the Water Waste Water Commission, and that proposed, so that was what we asked for from the Water Waste Water Commission. Jamesport went into a private session, came back out, and agreed to it, then, uh, the commission voted to accept it, so those are the bullet points, except they've been softened because Jamesport came back and said, you will buy this, and the, to be mutually agreed upon was not in there, that language was not in there. So, that was added to, to soften it, to say, gosh, you know, we've got to agree on whatever the price is. Uh, but that came from that joint meeting, it's where that, those bullet points, and that's, that was recorded and captured, and that's where that came from.
Did everyone have the reservation?
Uh, well, I wrote the draft, and then Alex assisted me, so that's where it came from.
I was wondering where the language came from. I agree with the council, uh, along here, I don't like in terms of, um, to mutually be agreed upon in the future is always a red flag. That's a lawsuit where you can have them, and, uh, I do think it needs to be fleshed out a little better. I do think that Jamesport, which is going to make you go back and give a little more detail.
Well, Mike, just like at that point, we, uh, for this to go on forward, can we just, uh, say, we, we will omit, uh, item B, uh, we'll just, you know?
I mean, that's all fine and good, but you don't have an agreement with Jamesport to do that.
That's right.
And you're going to have to go back out there, you're going to have to mutually agree, and then you're going to have to raise the board.
But, I mean, we, we could still, we could go back to Jamesport and say, you know, hey, we like, uh, A, and we like C, but, you know, being right now.
I mean, mutually beneficial.
Or in a separate resolution.
It's, it's to Jamesport's best interest as well, as to ours, to mutually agree right now, so that sometime in the future, we're not lost.
There was, there was a reason they changed the language back there. So, there was a reason that you agreed to something, and then all of a sudden you changed the language, that, that, that goes a red flag up there.
Well, are the points that they agreed upon in their special meeting, both exactly, both, uh, the mutually agreed upon cost is added, okay? Uh, because without that, it just, like, it says you're going to buy it, and it doesn't say that you're going to agree to anything. So, we added that to say you're going to mutually agree.
But what happens if you kept it to a degree?
Well, then.
Well, this has got to go back to the meeting.
Yeah.
I want your suggestion in the front meeting.
I'll make a motion to that.
Well, if we, if we do that, they, they don't meet very often, and this will, this will, this will be a, this could potentially be a deal killer in terms of acquiring these rights. They don't meet very often, and this will be very hard to get to this point.
Mary, what are you doing tomorrow? You go see Terry again, try to do, or, or this week at least? I know he can't make decisions, but we can get started. I, I can do that anytime.
And, and again, Mike, can we do this in two separate resolutions? Can we do, you know, like I said, uh, one for like, plan A, and then another resolution for B?
Again, I would already been doing that, because you really don't have an agreement. Marshall, bring that there really isn't anything that anybody's legal. Uh, I do think that you, I understand what you're saying, this needs to be done post case. I do think that there are ways that we can both, have both of these have, uh, expedited procedures to get this done, as everybody have heard say, it's in both parties' best interest to do this. So, we got thirty days before this annexation goes to, to any one, because we got a thirty-day timeframe. Let's see what we can get done, if we can't get it done, then we back here for thirty days and address this.
Well.
And I don't want to be a deadly coward, but, but I, I mean, I just have the counsel's point, it's a good burden for, I've been here for thirty, forty years, and I've, I've seen this tour, and, uh, you know, I mightn't be here very much longer, and, uh, I don't want to see the mid-person be toured.
Well, in the interest of just progressing discussion, your engineer has given you the data, uh, just so, so you'll know, it's a hundred and sixty-six thousand under the worst-case scenario for the infrastructure, but it's depreciated, so it's probably going to be less than that. And then, the cost estimate, uh, for the loss of revenue that your engineer came up with, on your behalf, uh, is two hundred and four thousand, if it's stretched out over twenty years.
Well, I think we should have had that as an attachment to the assessment.
And I apologize that you didn't.
Yeah, so.
I'd still agree with you.
Because. So, in the worst case, very worst-case scenario, it would be three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, but it's probably going to be something more like a hundred thousand.
Well, I think it would be above, a little above two hundred, but who knows? We, we'll talk to them, find out.
We have a motion to second.
Two motions is?
To table, just table this for the thirty days to, to be able to.
Let me ask you this, if, if Mr. Bailey and I make progress with Mr. Dubois, and Mr. Dubois is willing to get his career back together for a meeting to, or, and maybe with the commission, Water Waste Water Committee, at some point, does it have to be thirty days, or can, I mean, I guess you guys would be okay, if we got something, if both parties agree, we come back with a special call meeting prior to the end of that thirty days.
We get it all gathered by here, and Mike's been with it, then we could have.
Yeah, I think like, you know, to me, that's kind of, if this was the first, I can see it too, so I think, whatever we, we're presenting to the council, I'd like to see it run by Mike first.
Okay. That at least gets us, so the first step has been taken.
Well, uh, are you guys saying that you would agree to the other points of it, just not that one until there is a firm price?
We're table on it for thirty days, we got a motion to second.
It's a fair question.
That's what I'm just saying.
Well, I just.
Until we get all, all, there's no reason to dissect two, but we might as well just get it all fixed, and fix it all one time instead of.
So.
I think that's what we're saying.
So, the point, I think the point, maybe, maybe not, Cheryl made, was if we get, you need price, obviously. I think that would make it all better, not, maybe not perfect, but price, uh, but we, but there's other issues we need fixed, we need to get to know it as we go back and talk to the Jamesport Board.
And it can be used as leverage within the negotiations if they know that that's, that you're moving forward except for that point.
I mean, this is just not an agreement, it's a statement that says, we hope to have an agreement sometime in the future.
So, I, I don't disagree, because we don't have the cost in there.
I heard Lance and Daniel, I, I would, I would like for the, uh, advice of the council to say, you know, we need to iron it out.
Okay, we have a motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Dan? And Jerry?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, we will. No, they did not, no, I'm sorry, I didn't say that last. Not that we're aware of. It's just they basically relying on their engineer at this point.
Is Mr. Shores doing all this work the whole time, or?
No.
I, I just, I don't remember. I, I guess we'll have to get it to take or.
Yeah, they, they've got, I guess it's coming out of work.
Then you're, you've been voting.
Yeah. Okay. So, on that note, we, uh.
Eleven.
Eleven is not, uh, kind of irrelevant at the moment, I think, to get my head straight there. It is, the, the number eleven is in agreement, if I can find it, with the county to provide, thank you very much, thank you. So, number eleven would have been an agreement between Sebastian County City and Greenwood regarding, basically in nutshell, is to, is that we would, number two is your biggest letter, or, uh, no, I'm sorry, number one, the city of Greenwood agrees, which is what I think somebody asked earlier, agrees to provide access to sewer water services in Sebastian County Library located in the, in the extraterritorial jurisdictions in the city of Greenwood, meaning it's not in the city numbers yet, uh, which of course we're assuming, and you guys have heard that, that annexation. Uh, so, I don't know that I need any, this is to get back to the judge, I'll just tell you, I'm sure with this meeting, this is to get to the judge, so he has, uh, skinning the game from the city of Greenwood to move forward on the, put a place in the library on Mr. Burke's property. And, you know, there's no cost estimate here, that cost estimate is, is one of the numbers that you've heard from previous with this, and that's crossing, that's running the two-hundred feet line and crossing the road. So, he just, our, our, again, skinning the game, or, or anyone to call it, would be getting access to water over there, to the water, hence the sewer's already there. And this would get us a agreement with them to get the water over there, and that would be our part of making this library happen. Now, without, go ahead, go ahead. Without having a deal, uh, or made with Jamesport on the water rights, uh, we're obviously not going to go putting a water line across the road without getting those rights. This was to follow, go ahead.
I mean, this says that you're going to provide access to water and sewer.
Not, that's correct.
We're not providing water and sewer.
That's correct, that's correct.
Why does it need to, why does it, uh?
Every year?
Every year.
I had that discussion with Charlotte today, and it seemed like the fruit, I mean, it actually says, it's self-perpetuating, but.
The larger, I'd like to see those later.
Same thing what we do with everybody else. You're just agreeing to the same thing that you done on.
I don't get it.
I don't either.
I mean, what, if, we provide water, we provide access to water and sewer to anybody in our city.
Wouldn't this become, uh, huge after it's annexed to the city anywhere there?
Right.
Yes, yes.
That's why he said they just know, isn't he?
Well, it's only something to get in his hand, the judge is going to recognize once you do what, or if you do what's been asked, right? Annex, follows, follow up with water right purchases, this is just something for him to have in his hands, to put in front of his court and say, Greenwood is, is in on it, I mean, yeah, yeah, it's obvious that, once we annex, according to our own rules, we're going to provide that service, this is just, it's just a document to say that we've done it.
So, if the annexation, uh, which thirty days from now was just a factor, right?
Yes.
Makes this.
But we can't, but we're not going to put water lines over there instead of buying the rights.
Well, you couldn't if you don't have the rights.
Huh?
If you don't have the rights, you can't lay water.
That's what I just said.
You can lay line, you just can't sew water.
You, you can lay lines for fire suppression, you just can't start serving meat or pesting that.
Well, I know, this is talking about water and sewer, we can't do that. Well, just.
We can do the sewer. We could do the sewer service.
I get, I don't understand, I mean, it comes up and getting real long here, fire district.
That's just, that's just telling you what's already there. I asked judge for that, other judges, Jeff, I asked Jeff White over there, he says, it's just identifying who's already there to provide.
But if we can resolve these other two things, this is just really-
Don't worry.
That's what you're going to do.
I think it's still necessary for the judge to have it in his hands to say to the court and court.
I think that we have a special meeting to approve this other, you have this as a mission to, I suppose, say, Tom.
Right.
Well, I mean, we provide water and sewer in courthouse, right? Without this.
Why would you not do this if you're, if you're buying rights and annex? And why would you, why would you-
No, I don't, I mean, I don't see the reason not to do that. I'm just saying, I don't understand what it's for.
Does that sound?
I mean, we don't have a courthouse over there.
It's a feel-good. No, but the, no, but the courthouse is not asking the court to provide all the money. I don't know if I-
To build some water.
To build.
There's private donations opposite someone in the boardroom.
There are people who are all very supportive of the library service department, they're doing just for water.
It's a, it's a feel-good file. It's a feel-good document.
Well, Mike-
Good man.
The judge has taken the library budget and the proposed plan for the court and court. I know he did December twenty-first and I think he did it again last month. So they, they got a budget that they've developed and they updated the budget and one of the line items on that budget is utilities to the project. And so it's got, you know, it's got a number in there. And so what the judge is looking for is confirmation from Greenwood that that line item is taken care of. And so it is really more than just a document. It truly is associated with a line item on that budget. And the court and court has, I believe unanimously, for anyone that's, I believe unanimously passed to support the library development in this location. And it's, they're waiting on this document to move forward with the budget. So they are, they are waiting on this document and it's because of the associated with the line item.
I'm assuming that my, I would think that they're thinking we're going to pay for water and sewer, what's it?
Well-
No. You mean that?
I mean, please look.
No.
No.
And the document actually, when this came to me, document verified, this, this document actually, so we added, and this is going back to the judge for his approval, but so we added, it did say, well, sir, I'm sorry, provide sewer and water services, which means we'd be paying for water and sewer. So we changed it to provide access to water and sewer. Hope that the court and court pays.
Hey, you, I, I'm reading. And I talked on behalf of the library.
Yes, you may.
Library.
Come introduce yourself. I had two, I'd rather the pretty lady speak.
And I would love, love for her too, but she, she says she's behind me all about it. Jim Reynolds, I don't know what else I'm supposed to say, but that's my introduction. There's a lot of people that have worked on the library for a long time. I talked to Brother Ronnie not too long ago and he said, I was at a visitation, he said, he came up to me, he said, what, this, I'm here about this library, I've been here since for twenty-three years, ever since I've been here, what's going on? And they're just happy, so be it, JP that was right there and I said, well, better than me, why don't you talk to the JP, it's right here. And he did, and he said, you better than me. And so Brother Ronnie, I know, was trying to get that, he says they put it in the budget forever and then they just took it out because they thought it was never going to happen. And here you have a JP telling you to get ready because it's going to happen. So I think they are-
The church property.
Huh?
For the church to purchase that.
That's correct. To purchase the old property, which was, I believe, built in nineteen sixty-five and survived, or correct me if I'm wrong, survived to twenty-eight.
It did.
Okay? So it's not ADA compliant, there's lots of issues with it, most of y'all have been in there all your lives, you know. This is deep. And so Brother Ronnie said twenty-three years that he's been here, has been on, on the document. They took it out. Ken Hamilton is going to be speaking to the court this month. And this document, I know y'all all met the judge, I know, you know how he is. And all it is, like the mayor said, is a feel-good document for him to get his ducks in order to go to the court and say, okay, Greenwood is doing this, let's proceed. And there, it's like, this whole process has been the city council, James Ford, the water, the, the library boards, the, the court. It's like our tax won't even be one direction. It's hard. And it's almost like who's going to take, who's going to take the first step to make this progress happen? And I hope it's the city of Greenwood because I know the county is going to come in there and help with the dirt. And they've done that before with some other things. And they are ready to step up and do their part. Sean Looper has been a trooper on this. If you're on the library board or for the library, it's not going to be a two-story facility, it's going to be one-story, you don't have climb stairs, you don't have to ride an elevator, it's going to be, it's nice. And Michael Lejeune's all over this too. And we owe it to him to do that as well, but we owe it to the people that have been doing this, like Ken Hamilton, Dr. Hamilton, for twenty-three years. It's time to get this built and I hope that y'all will support that and show the court that you're behind it, they're behind it, we're all behind it. And I think we can sell this thing. Thank you.
I agree with Mike that we could push on with, with the settlement, you know, do it all at the same time.
Well, it's not for a public video, but you probably have, county is about wanting to sign a check and then handing it to you and stuff that we've done. We still haven't ever got an answer on the stuff from the agreement for the dispatch stuff and all that, we're still, that's just, we're still paying it and we're still losing that black privilege. But just, sometimes the county, there's a lot of un-donated eyes and cross teams that has, I'd like to say, when they write blank checks sometimes, so it's a little clarification sometimes, it's nice. One more thing from Mike. Lance, I totally agree with you on, let's set a price for James Ford right now on those other properties and get a number right now and let's deal with it right now because we know the construction costs are going up every single day. And when we started this library thing, when I got into the library thing about five years ago, possibly six, it was, the number was two point five million dollars. It's done right now. It's on, it's nearly five million dollars right now. And if we wait any longer, and this is what Dr. Hamilton's going to telephone for, if we wait any longer and we don't lock that thing in right now, it's going to be out there where we'll never be able to find it and again, a whole lot of money to build. So I agree with you totally. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm right there. As a worker with the development, I would be remiss if I did not mention that this land, this two-plus acres is being donated. And so based on the valuation that's under contract, this land is over a million dollars worth of donation to the library. And so it really is dependent upon the county meeting board and in relationship with the city for this valuable land to be donated to the library. So I did want to, I did want to make that point, that it is being donated. And if it were to be sold in accordance to the right, the market value that's being set for loss, I'd be nine to be over a million dollars.
Thank you. So what you're, I mean, I totally agree. I mean, my plan was this to follow as they were in order and I completely understand everybody's concern on having prices down on the other, on the other parcels of property or the water rights on those, about fifty-five acres, I think, and a hundred, almost a hundred and fifty acres. So-
My only question about this, Mayor, I have no problem with the agreement. My only question would be if the James Ford thing, it seems to be contingent upon the James Ford degree.
Right.
I mean, that's part of this whole process and we've got a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
And it all got to fall into place.
Absolutely. Well, so let me ask you, and if you don't want to do this, I can totally understand too, and Mike can give his opinion on this, is, I don't want to, I don't want to keep the county, I don't want to slow them down, I don't know what that schedule is, I know they're not going to show up tomorrow and start building the library, but I don't, I like for the judge to, to get what he needs as soon as he can get it, only because it is the library and we're trying to be, it's a regional, by the way, it's a regional library and so it's a, it's a big deal. It's not a tax revenue for us as we know, but it's a kickoff on this property. So I guess I would ask, and feel like it's not going to happen, I don't mean that bad, but boy.
Drawl.
It is a drawl, it's definitely a drawl to the property for sure. Can you pass this to get it back to the judge so he can continue his progress and have something in hand saying that the city is willing to provide what it says is going to provide, access contingent on us making a deal with James Ford on those rights, but we're not going to do this, I'm assuming.
Well, I think do that at the end of number one, comma contingent upon their-
Just add-
-legal ability to do so.
Because we can't without-
Well, even with the comma, what are, we've already said that if we can get all this straight with the James Ford, we're going to run something underneath the road, two hundred and some foot here, two hundred foot total and get onto the property. That's what we were talking about earlier.
Right.
So the library's at eleven, right at ten?
Yeah, or, yes, I believe.
So when we're providing access, are we stopping down here at the street if somebody's going to get to them or are we going to run just a separate line to the library? What is providing access?
Access, in my opinion, and maybe it doesn't spell the apple, I'm just getting it on property, access to property, not to the library.
I, I don't care either, I'm just saying, are we going to get it to the property and then also come-
I'm not condoning, we run water line from, from, since we crossed over on Mr. Burton property, I'm not personally condoning, we run a water line anywhere.
I'm just saying, that's kind of what I think we're getting, that's what this is-
Access to sewer water services.
Or what they think is saying. I'd like to get that, I mean, I just want to make that clear, when they come back and say, well, y'all are going to give us eighty foot of water line you set right here.
We can, if you, if you, I don't think that's a bill killer, but the library, I, we can go back and-
I didn't know if the developer, she mentioned the developer, once we got it inside the property, they were going to run through it where, I didn't know, I mean, they're already doing it for me.
I'm already, yeah, nobody's asked me to run it, but, but I mean, yeah, that could be a-
You know, I think in the spirit of it, the developer is fine to take it to the library.
Look, he'll take it everywhere else, the library's on the way.
I think the spirit of this is for you guys to help get the water rights.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot that you got, the heavy lifting you guys are doing to get it to the front, to the thirty-six acres, so.
I think, I think we should follow the attorney's advice, put this on the same meeting with the other James Ford, meanwhile, the city's perfectly willing to work with the county and the library folks. I mean, we're going to do whatever we can to work with, and nobody's against it, we just got to get the paperwork right.
And if we have a call meeting, then something-
Yeah, okay.
The Midland Rural Volunteer, that bad language of her, or is that just, she said something, something?
I'd keep it better explained that, I don't know, I'm sure not, because the Midland-
I don't think that's the way to do it.
I'm thinking it's a-
I was, I was just-
The white books.
Come, come get your copy.
It says, whereas a Midland Rural Volunteer Fire District, that's that would be so great. Father volunteer.
Correct.
I was told by Mr.-
It's a long room, right?
I didn't know about that one either. Mr. Turner informed me that that was his way of stating news.
No, that's actually, that's a white book, Rock Hill District, so.
So that needs to be revised.
Yeah, basically somewhere, that's not what-
But if we annex it?
We annex it to the city of Greenwood.
Yeah, that's right. I think he was just trying to make a statement that there's what he's providing now.
It's a white book now.
Okay. So we can strike it, replace it with a white book?
Yeah.
You know?
It's already written as extraterritorial.
Right.
Well, that's everything else, those, those, those are green.
Correct. That's the whole-
That's a special meeting.
Right. Okay. We'll bring you back if we'll have that meeting, when we have it, whether it's in thirty days or prior to that, we'll have that.
Just so I'm clear, I'm not trying to kill those deals, we just got to get all the-
No, I think you made a big step with the annexation acceptance and I get a wood in trouble.
May I make much, we kind of just, we, for us, number four, you know, you know this?
Yeah, I don't know actually.
Right, have a motion? Second, second.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And there's-
Yes.
Lister?
Yes.
Here. Has about a little bit of-
Okay, thank you. Okay, number seven.
Six.
Second. Thank you. I did again. Water and Waste War Commission refusal or replacement through tax fee for this, for this. Mr. Burton?
I'm going to give you a little bit of explanation where this all started. It started out with, they wanted to change ordinance four twenty-three to add, if a developer installs a line in the line, then that is the sewer path. And we were going to take out the theme for two hundred and fifty. If they installed inline wires, which we require, then we shouldn't be charged a tax fee on something that they've packed, they've done it, and run the line, all we have to do is just pull them tight end to it. It went from there and the council wanted to put all the orgies together in one water sewer. And then we also had a, a four ninety-two, which is a five-third dollar sewer tie on this thing. And doing so, I'll turn it over to Mike. You want anything else that we put that in?
In viewing this, does this one of the times the impact fee go?
It was a kind, two or kind, yeah.
One just says, it's a time or impact?
Impact.
That's a-
I think having one other than that particular language, that particular language gets covered by a separate statute that has a totally separate one. And you have to spell out, and it's very stringent requirements in order to adopt an impact fee. And an impact fee can only be utilized for certain things, one of which cannot be used for the operation rate. And it can only be used after you have a, let's see the language here. Only after the community service has a top of the capital plan and level of service standards for all the public facilities that are being so financed, you have to fill out what good public facilities and capital improvements that are needed to be financed by this, that keep totally separate, it's a different, interesting bearing account and whatever is not due to that account must be refunded. So I-
Now, we just took that out of, out of the ordinance, the new ordinance, just did replace four ninety-two and just left it the way it was from nineteen ninety-three.
I don't, because you could be just talking about it.
From nineteen ninety-three, that ordinance that he's referring to talks about a tie-in. And that's what Rod Powell just talked about as far as being an impact fee, that is, attention to that. So if you go to this fourteen fifty-six one oh three, which is in effect now, it says in its language, three A, a fee or charge imposed for this purpose is a development impact fee regardless of what the fee or charge is named. So if you call it something different, as long as its purpose is an impact fee to fund the development or add capacity to the development, it's an impact fee.
I agree with that after reading the statute, that it doesn't make that clear.
When is, when was that statute? Was it already placed?
That was ninety-three.
It already placed when we did twenty-two?
It was already placed, I believe, yeah.
My request on this months ago, when this all came up, about five hundred dollar whatever it was, was to go back and say, what do you want for it?
Was to go back and say, what do you want for a tap fee? How much do you want for a tap fee, period? And if you want to have, this is our charge for a tap in a sewer, if you do the tap, then here's our administrative fee or whatever, you know, if it's a different fee. If it's seven hundred dollars to do this and two hundred to do that, or whatever that number needs to be, that's what I think we should do.
Well, and when this was in, in play, our three hundred fifty, if we still keep the five hundred, that's that fifty, and that's very high for someone on the. Tie also, if we leave the five hundred, if it's still in there, then I don't want to go over three fifty. And if it's not in there, maybe we should change to three fifty.
We have on here a four inch tap, three fifty, a six inch tap, four fifty, larger than six, seven hundred plus overrun.
Plus overrun.
And wait, is that adequate to leave that as the fee?
Yes.
And to take this sewer impact fee business off of here.
That would also require section four, can you remove?
And then, uh, section four, I agree, remove section four. Um, and then the second question is, if the developer handles the tap. Do we have a different fee?
If they have an inline wire, when, when the water service is done, Kim comes in, taps the line. And puts in a water tap. When the sewer is done, sewer taps in. Because they put an inline wire. If we do a sewer tap on it, it might last twenty or thirty years. With you, with an inline wire, you're probably going to go forty, fifty years, because it's harder to tie. So it's, it's the way that we're required. So that, I, the four inch, to where it's just a sewer for the yard, the water comes out, it's tied in.
So.
So there's no actual tapping on our part. We just point out where the four inch line is.
I mean, if they do, if they do the tap, and they provide the material and all that. The only part the city plays is pointing fingers and telling where to do that, and inspection, I suppose, of some sort, say you did it. So we have some administrative fee.
Administrative fee to that. I, it also adds builder and developer. I'd like to take the builder out. Because if you put builder in there, someone builds a house, and then you can make it some pass, and I don't want that to happen. I don't want it tapping on our line, we have it on our line.
You want to take what out, the builder?
Just the builder, and the development. If the developer develops, and if the inline wire in, and he's done the tap, it's done. We could charge a small fee for inspection, or, you know, he'll come back with something.
Is there already going to be an inspection fee for plumbing that's a part of the permit process?
Not for the development of the actual infrastructure. I do everything yard lines on the actual block.
That's in the permit?
Yeah, that, that'll be covered as permit cost. What you're talking about would be inspection on the sewer department's part. When they have open ditches for the actual infrastructure. We're going to be inspecting that anyway.
And I kind of agree, Andy, there's some, I was still a administrative fee there, to go out there and inspect there, one of those.
I don't know what that is, it's not much.
In researches, I talked to borrowing, and borrowing adds, adds on like a hundred bucks to the permit, building permit, and they just. Back to water through park or these things, that's how borrowing goes.
So let me get this correct. You're making the tap, city making the tap?
Not on a new development, when they put the line in, as they're going, instead of cutting into the line or anything, they slip an inline wire there. And it's got a four inch coming out of it, so we don't touch it.
It's, it's. You said take the builder out of it, you don't want somebody else making that tap.
Someone building a house and come in actually cutting into the line. But if you're the developer and you put in an inline wire.
As you're, as you're putting the new pipes in.
Yes, and that's what we require, inline wires. So there's no big problem for leaks. When you're used to, what they do is they crack hole them.
So if somebody else opens a house, you're, you're going to put a wire in?
No, we're doing a tap, which is a.
So there won't be, there won't be a wire on the supply?
You do that when you install a new, because you have to actually put it in, you can put in a pipe. We can put it in, but we have to put the reference, which is equivalent of.
Just more work, we're going to be two hundred bits of one wire.
So should I think, we should put that wording in there, since that's why it says something specific? You know, in there saying that they installed an inline wire sewer tap, as opposed to, you're saying a sewer tap.
So.
If, if you're going to tie it somewhere else, you're going to tie it on the belt, and pay the tax fee, because we installed.
Okay, let's back up and then walk through this, Gary. On, uh. Item seven. Comes out, exhibit A, City Greenwood Tap Fee Schedule, water related tax. Water meters shall be furnished and installed by builder slash developer. Does that just need to be developer? Where are you reading that?
That's on the water part.
On the water related tax.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A. Where does it say the builder, uh?
Number seven.
Oh, number seven.
And up there in the first sentence.
Builder, that's, that's talking about anything larger than a two inch meter. We, we only have, so two inch, we have a two inch meter. So it's any tap larger than two inches shall be responsible, and builder developer will meet the following criteria, one through nine. So, but for instance, we want to take builder out and just have a builder. Is it okay in this case to have builder in there, is my question? Um, it says builder slash developer. I didn't, I originally had, uh, I think owner developer.
Yeah, I did.
Charlotte modified builder.
I did, because they, because the commission asked for it, say builder, that day, with their vote.
I, I, maybe, I, I.
They did, take.
I'm not, I'm not disagree with you. I had originally owner developer, I think that's, you know, so, but. Because whoever owns the property is going to be responsible for it. But then, today, it doesn't matter, it's, 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 I don't think, for me. Okay, so the water part is good.
His who buys the property and puts it in, if they want to figure something, they do it. Mine is got to be done while it's being built.
Okay, so sewer related tiles, four inch tap, three fifty, six inch, four fifty, larger than six, seven hundred dollars.
Plus.
Plus overrun.
And that goes with the three fifty to the four fifty. If you call us up to a sewer path, and it has to cross a road. It has to cross some of these, I think there might be some additional.
Okay, uh. And then you got this thing about any event, any builder developer, you want to take builder out?
Yes.
Any gold, private, shelter, blah, blah, blah.
I, I should, I should rewrite that as the inline wires.
And it says the tap shall be waived. Do we want to have an administrative fee?
With an, you can put it with an administrative fee.
I think, you know, we could put that administrative on to the permit, I like what John was saying. And that, you know, hundred dollars.
I think it would be easier if you just named it as a separate fee, just like a sewer tap. If you're in a development, you would pay a hundred dollar sewer tap if you were playing inline wires. So in a new development, you have this sewer tap fee. That way it's guaranteed to go, and it's paid through the water department. I don't ever have to mess with it, like I do, like I don't have to now. And you label all of your other fees as taps on pre-existing lines, because that's the only instance where they would do their own personal tap. So if you label those fees as on pre-existing lines, that solves the whole issue.
Specify pre-existing line.
Specify those other fees as pre-existing lines, and the new hundred dollar, which is just going to be administrative fee, still called sewer tap fee, or whatever you want to call it, but keep it in that same category. That way, all I've got to do is write on my permits, they need to water that, and you pay the hundred dollar fee for the new development. If not, it'll be the same, three fifty, that didn't pay.
Well, it says the fee will be waived upon approval proceeding with wastewater directors, but I think that's probably, you know, we probably need to make that general decision, I mean. Upon approval by the City Greenwood, you know, I'm not going to give back this stuff here, is that?
And this is just something to look at, if you guys have anything, I'm sure that all kind of problems.
Well, this is what the water commission voted on, suggested to you guys.
I think that's good, just like, you know, city, from City Greenwood, I like that. And then make sure we have inline wire up there with the sewer tap.
And you could even label it an inline wire tap fee, and just make a scheduled fee, just like it'd be my term limits.
Okay, can we make all those changes discussed and put this on perjury?
I, I would kind of still though, because I'm just saying it's an inline wire tap fee, but still say it's the like thing, it's an administrative or inspection fee, you know, if you kind of just really. That's probably what it is.
I mean, you guys, I think you understand. I think we're all understanding what we're saying. Can we do this perjury and all fix it?
Okay, you're, you're doing something, you're going to be adding a generic fee, or if you set the fee here, it's not going back to the water commission. So I think if you make these changes, the water commission need to review these changes.
I'll advise them.
And then come back to you. That's what I would say. I don't think we should formally go through the process without them seeing what your recommendation is.
But you can vote to, to our perjury and title, or if you discuss, or you go back to the, what was part of their.
And that's about it, I guess, those changes. I mean, give us a cleaner document with those changes.
But I also want to say, four ninety-two is going to be stricken from this, because we're going to leave that ordinance alone.
Yeah, I see that.
With five hundred dollars fee on it.
Yeah, I think leave that one as long, remove that.
So four ninety-two can be scratched, and so is.
Four ninety-two is the, uh.
Five hundred dollars fee, isn't it?
I thought that was the whole point of why we started this.
No, we're trying to stay whether we're going to waive the tap fee or not.
It's four twenty-three?
Four twenty-three, tap, tap fee, what we started with, taking into.
Four ninety-two is the one, that's the five hundred dollars, but, which is a sewer impact fee, and I have to accept right now.
But I think, like, you're saying that we have something as an impact fee, or we do as an impact fee, that's the call under this deadline of impact.
If we change, if we change.
So if we not just talk to five hundred impact fee and adjust the three fifty for inspection?
That's what I'm saying.
One.
Get rid of that impact fee and all that conversation, and say, what do you want to tap the sewer on?
And this would eventually nullify four ninety-two. It's just not a bad thing. And I want to give you guys some guidance on what you can do. I'm not advocating you ignore impacts. Because there's a lot of thought one way or the other, as for on a new development. Yes, there are going to be some impacts, as you've all discussed. What you can do, because it does say in your statute on page two, it says in item seven, first, unjobs, B unjobs. It says, a municipality or, uh, may assess and arrange by ordinance a development impact fee to offset costs to the municipality. That are reasonably attributed to providing necessary public facilities to the new development. But if you go up to number seven, you'll see everything that's impacted by an impact fee. Uh, water supply, treatment, distribution, wastewater, storm, water drainage, which we call on your street. Roads, streets, sidewalks, highways, library, parks, open space, recreational areas, public and police safety, uh, fire protection. And if you had emergency medical transportation services, if you provided that too. So what they're saying is, in the past, the reason this became a separate ordinance is because there were some concerns by citizens that vary impact fees. As a hidden tax in other businesses, and they didn't like that, so it went to the legislature and they decided to make it. You guys, the city council, have to come up with a, with an ordinance that addresses all impact fees. So if you want to sit down and do it, following these guidelines, naming how you're going to assess the impact fee. Naming what impact fees there are, because it has to be providing additional capacity, and not be to maintain a road. It has to be to, um, for instance, if a park was given green space, and the park might become and develop a playground on it. That developing that playground can be considered an impact fee for that development. And we have to isolate those parks.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollar line comes down to make a loop back to feed.
Anything for a pump station or a lift station that you would have to do to increase the capacity to that, is definitely an impact that, for that development. And the money that are not spent as a result of that development have to be refunded back within a seven year period. You have a seven year period, clock ticks from the minute.
Well, in this case of this East Village, we were talking about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, two fifty-one times five hundred, or whatever the number was. And there was a comment over a million dollars of impacts that were going to have to be done, not specifically because of that, but specifically because of that.
This is saying, what I'm trying to say to you is that I'm, I'm not saying, don't do impact fee, I'm just, I'm saying, don't bury it in the water tap. Correct. And call it something else, because it would be construed as a hidden tax. That's why the legislature came up with that.
If you have an impact fee associated, we'll say each village, because they're here now, of. If we have an impact fee, it has to be negotiated with each village.
Developers.
Development before it ever starts.
Right.
That says, we're going to take this impact fee and build a library, or we're going to buy any of them.
They should add much water line, help the flow.
But that has to be part of the negotiation with that developer.
Before it started.
With the regulars, we never know.
That's, that's before the project has started.
Correct.
Because that's part of their consideration, even though they use it.
I don't know, I think it's mine, that the, the impact fee was to, also for the citizens that, that have been living pretty good, paying taxes all these years, you know, don't have sewer. That it was also to help, you know, basically get, you know, sewer, you know, to them, you know, to have, you know, uh, because, you know, their big impact on us, you know, uh. New development with added traffic and all, and all sorts of that, but that was eventually, you know, try to get sewer, you know, uh, to existing citizens. And paying their taxes for.
But it's not, you can't use an impact fee for that. You can't use the impact fee.
I think you said for adding.
To the new developers, because what you're, what the impact fee is saying is that the development that you're allowing to be built should not tax other parts of the state. They shouldn't have to pay for that new development.
Right.
So if there's a need for the tax money to be used to, for the additional capacity to a lift station or a pump station, the development has to pay for that. The new development, not the other citizens. So that frees up your capital money to do the, the additional services to the other parts of town, like you're saying. If you have to use your capital money now to build that to increase pump stations' capacity, it takes away from your ability to put, to redirect that capital money. So the impact fee helps both, but you, you have, in order for us to determine the use of that, it specifically says to the development. So, um, we have to put it in an interest rate account, and then it's after seven years, whether it's not spent, which, aren't they ever, but if it's not spent, which are our circumstances, we would have to refund that money back. So it isn't a huge, it's a huge burden on the county side, but it's also a huge burden to account for and spend according to the law.
So we voted a few times in here to not waive the fee out to this new place, around right there. And just on the loophole, where we try to find the, not worry about that, or what?
This new development is a done deal.
Right.
It would apply to.
There's a lot of, I don't know, they can come to the.
This is going to kick back to the commission, this part of the issue, I, I thought Cheryl and I kind of had this worked out, but I just want to make sure. Because really, the only thing we're changing is a little bit of garbage, and some just highlighted, and some of the pricing is getting more current. But when I look at Tom, it still has some garbage, something he had, uh, a standard. But when I look at Tom's, it still has some garbage, something he had a standard and charged for, but that's the road customers who don't pay more. What are, what you, and you have in there the language that says wherever actual.
I have whatever you and I have talked about.
Yeah, I think we have.
Make sure.
We need to just make sure that there are still some sort of impact fee, however the garbage, whatever there needs to be, that pertains to this as well. Because it's going to be impacts. Now, obviously, if you don't want to be like the force of business and run off a bunch of good business, but there's some stuff you need to be waiving to deliver businesses in here whenever we could. So there should be concessions, yeah, but.
But last page is sewer and second page is water.
We still, then, it's not on here where actual cost is. Wherever actual cost is right in the fat rate.
Yeah, we got it.
I thought we did, but I'm not seeing it.
Because it was, remember, it was in this page that says, remember, it talks about it in one of the sections that classed all of it.
Which, which one is that?
Section three, if actual cost shall be more than the listed charges that are charged in the tariff counter.
And that's applicable to what?
It's the same exactly as we talked about in class.
I make a motion, we place this on its first reading by Todd Lonely, with the changes discussed being made by the Water Sewer Commission Department. We're being approved by the water. Brought back to us at the next meeting.
He's hoping to get the Water and Sewer Commission to bless him on the changes that we made.
There you go.
Rarely does the elected body that's going to build a commission or go against in this case to get.
To fix all that language we're just talking about right now.
We have a motion. You will read this, so please give me a second.
We're debating by Todd Lonely with changes discussed and have a water commission, Waterway Water Commission, review it and approve it and bring back to the next meeting. Does she agree?
So her side about it.
Second.
Sorry, man. What is it? Or she said?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Baker? Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah.
Yes.
And Terry? An ordinance repealing or replacing ordinances, four twenty-three and fourteen dash zero seven, establishing one combined water and sewer tap fee schedule. Not requiring emergency. Getting that emergency calls off there too.
Done. All right, thank you. Number seven is finances, resolution to authorize electronic received and valued for services.
We have had several departments and citizens want to pay with a credit card or debit card. It can in the water department, but that's a unique system to them and it processes the water payments through an agreement that they have with their water billing system. It is not designed to accommodate general department functions. So there's, the permit department is who basically in the planning area asked for and have researched and have the ability through their iWork queue or iWork, iWork software that they currently have. There is an add-on feature called payments processing and they use PayRock. PayRock allows for them to accept credit cards. There is a USB plug-in to their computer that allows the person to come in and wants to pay their permanent fees with a credit card. They can do it right on their system. It's encrypted, it's secure. And there is a twenty-four hour, I think is what they said, or no more than forty-eight, but a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround time of the approval and then it hits our bank automatically, automatically. We will work with the iWork processors for them. However, they didn't put in the name of the company in this to make it generic, to give us the ability to look to see if it works for them on the permit process. We're not sure exactly how and to what additional cost it would be for parks to use it, for rental or to Lillian, for, who else commented, animal control or.
They would just go through PayRock. They would pay with iWork software. They would just go through PayRock and do all the according to them.
And also privileged license.
Privileged license patients. Anything that they would want to use for, instance, a credit card board that is on the general side, which are all those general departments, the planning, finance, or parks, they all fall under the animal hospital category. There is a fee if we were to go with the iWork queue, iWork with a queue. Add-on for that PayRock processing or payment processing through PayRock is eight hundred and fifty dollars for the module. And that's a kind of a fee because they are servicing and working with us on the upgrades and the reporting. Reporting that also gives them the ability to call in the help if they need it. So that's an annual fee, obviously, the fee that would be budgeted in. Right now, it wouldn't solely be responsibility of the planning department. What we would look for is any fee by any processor would be shared cost to the departments that are utilizing it on a how they utilize it basis. There is one thing, everybody that used it early on in the past in other cities, there's a second whereas in your resolution there. Arkansas Municipal Code fourteen fifty-nine of one nineteen allows for the municipality to accept electronically received debit and credit card funds. One of the things that we would probably want to morph into at some point would be the ACH D check, which you can do in a lot of municipalities where you put your routing number, if you've ever done it, you put the routing number in your checking account, that way it comes out of your checking account. That way you're not using the credit or debit card. And that usually means you don't have the convenience fee. Usually debit cards, credit cards, I know credit cards do, I don't know about debits. But credit card processors, they charge a fee and the fee by PayRock right now is three point two five percent or two dollars minimum. Three point, up to three point two five percent of whatever is your value of what you're charging. None of that comes to the city. We don't pay that. PayRock would bill the customer or the user of their card that fee to them and they would collect that. We would only collect the amount of our fees that they're using on your card. We would have to disclose to them there is a convenience fee in that fee.
It's already kind of a month that you've got those convenience fees.
For to pay with an E-check. With an E-check? Wow, Fort City, Fort Smith doesn't charge anyone.
If you pay, like Swatco, if you pay with E-check, it's already.
What does it take to?
OT and E doesn't charge me.
I'm just saying that's, yeah. I've just done it every year.
Well, see, they can collect that if I'm correct.
I'm just, I'm just saying it's.
We would have to pass that through.
It's hilarious.
What would it take to have that ability too, the ACH?
I don't know. I'm not sure. We haven't talked with PayRock about an ACH feature. That would probably have to be something that we'd have to work with the banks. And there's clearing processors for that. I will be in touch at some point with Fort Smith to see how they do it because they do have to pay E-chats. But right now, we want to take that baby step or at least get it into the game where we can accept credit cards and debit cards. Because there's not a day go by when you're not asked that question. Can you take the, do you take the credit?
Yeah, we're saying, no, they're not where they're at.
Well, then they have to go either to an ATM and bring cash or they have a checkout channel. Now, commercial permit people, they usually know our processes.
Right.
They write a check. We had a person recently trying to make it a positive. We told them that we want to draw the checks.
Their understanding was new couple is moving here on.
Arizona.
And real nice and they, I got my attention with a gentleman I didn't recognize him and he was about six-six, so I got my attention. And he said, "Where are you going to do this?" She goes, "I've got to go across the street to get some money." And he was kind of like, "What?" So I went over and visited with him and he wasn't upset, but he kind of sprang up. I went to Tom and said, "Where?"
We're going to raise our fees, reboot the annual fee?
No, it's in the budget. I mean, you're giving the service for that. Because they maintain the software and they maintain the customer service and they maintain the upgrades that are required in the batteries. So we don't have to deal with any of that side. And it's, they're paying annual fee for their permit off their twenty-five hundred bucks to five thousand.
It's already in the permit software, so why is it low?
It's an add-on feature to what they kind of were trying to.
Yeah, he budgeted this last quarter in correct sense, eight fifty. He already approved that. I mean, this was kind of a lady's way of principle. Let me get this on the agenda.
We just want to move forward, but we do have a section four in there about adding the policies and procedures and that you would be adopting those once they're created, you'd be aware of what the policies and procedures are. That ensures the integrity of the financial reporting and the transactions.
I may not see adopt this rule.
That takes twenty-four to forty-eight hours that the money's not actually there and they, in their account. The section four.
Well, it goes through, like Bank of America's credit card that they didn't override their credit limit. In other words, it clears in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. They did tell us that ninety-something percent of the transactions clear within twenty-four hours. But our water department, those transactions clear all day long for days. I mean, we'll record the receipt of the money and then we actually see it hit our bank within three days.
So if one doesn't clear, we have stuff in or there's.
It's like an NSF check. It will come back saying.
Yeah.
Now, the only ones that we have those issues are not on the credit cards because once they submit that, the credit cards, they get the approval right away. It's the debit cards.
Right, yeah.
And so Vanco sends back that electronic payment as an NSF.
And then what do we do?
They put it back on their bill and bargain to pay.
Okay. Yeah, but I just make sure we had all that.
And our process would have to be if anything were to be kicked back as NSF or uncollected, that we would disclose to them. There would be an additional clean for that.
Yeah. The same thing as if I brought the chain and the house is a word. So we have a motion in second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah.
And Terry?
Slow roll till it's back.
It passes with you? It passes without majority without.
Yes.
Okay. And indisposed if not, that passes back to you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. I'm bringing in planning. There you go. Right on you.
We vouch for you.
Planning, building, ordinance, repealing, replacing ordinance, double oh dash fifteen, many ordnance eighteen, nineteen, establishing planings, planning jurisdiction area with number six passage.
Mayor Council, Mr. Gary. This is an ordinance that we do from time to time that basically establishes our planning jurisdiction, brings it up to date. And Western Art's all thing, redraw the map, or draw the map that you have in your package to make sure that it was correct. It was our one mile planning jurisdiction around Greenwood. So any development that comes in that wants to build within that jurisdiction has to follow our subdivision regulations. So again, this is something we do from time to time. I think there is an emergency clause on that. That's a, you guys, the kind of thing that is immediate. We've got some people looking at some property that's within our planning jurisdiction, but they are well within their due to the city limits, so it's not a favor.
We figure this is probably the most useless piece of legislation in all of our stuff in the city and this deal here.
What is that?
The planning jurisdiction, rigmarole.
It's just something that we have to do according to state statute. State statute fourteen fifty-six, rule thirteen, we have to do.
So it's odd that we have to, because we don't ever go outside and do anything to people that are doing stuff that are outside.
There's a limit to it. It might be good times to say what that limitation is. I think there's always.
You know, if somebody's building a house outside the city limits, we do this, it's not within our jurisdiction. If somebody was building a subdivision that has to put in water, sewer, streets, math, then they have to follow our subdivision regulations within that one mile. Like you might remember years ago, it was five miles. The state dropped it back to the city our size is only one mile.
Your zoning guidelines don't violate the true community one mile.
Again, with subdivisions is not necessarily.
Etting zoos.
If somebody was outside the city limits and wanted to put in a.
Etting zoo.
A duplex or chicken house or whatever, that does not apply to us.
Etting zoos don't. Etting zoos do not apply?
No, no.
Well, that's chicken.
Are you playing them?
If Mr. Burns' property is annexed in the next thirty days, then this map comes off clean.
It will, it will change in that area. It will extend out his thirty-six lots.
Decred.
Yeah. And then it will extend out, you know, and it's a. And like I said, that's the reason why we do it from time to time and bring it up to date.
Could we wait and do this next one in the case we had excess?
Yeah, we really already annexed it.
We actually did our first reading and then.
There you go.
And then redraw it for the new update.
Yeah, it's a simple thing with Western Art's all thing. I asked them to do it and she fired it back to me, so it's not a, it's not a. There's no expense to it.
Took caller tomorrow until her top date. And I had to do two tonight.
And like I said, it's one of those things that doesn't charge the same thing, so that's another good thing.
Well, I mean seriously though, we just added some.
Hey, good point. Good point.
I make a motion, you put it on its first reading by Todd Lonely.
Thank you.
With the exhibit A map being updated next month, speaking.
All good. Bye, Alan.
Second, Carol.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Third edition.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mike Terry?
Yes.
Danis?
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
And ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance eighteen zero seven fifteen and amendment number eighteen dash nine, establishing planning jurisdiction area for the City of Greenwood, Arkansas. Acquiring emergency for other purposes.
Thank you. Number nine is Parks Department Resolution to authorize federal aid for recreational facilities program grant funds.
Hello.
Ms. Brell.
Um, you have before you two resolutions, actually. First one is for our G P grant that I will be applying for again with the help of Western Art and Soft Planning Development for the light trail vine bridge. And the second one is an ordinance for a grant I will be applying for through Art's Department, Parks Heritage Tourism, that will go toward the splash pad to imagine for him.
Now, to be the devil's advocate, if there was splash pad mentioned early, early in this meeting, are we going to do the double splash pad action here in Greenwood? Possibly?
Talking about that development.
Go from none to two would be awesome.
There are a lot of towns that.
I assume the Parks Department has the twenty percent matching parts for this first resolution.
Yes.
For funds. If we get. I make a motion for a second first resolution.
We have a motion in quick second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Hi, Terry?
Yes.
The second one was for the Parks Department, Parks Heritage Tourism.
And what, I guess, is there a, an amount of that or anything?
Um, I'm going to apply for the maximum.
Yes.
Do you think somehow maybe that the splash pad is going to cost, I think that's up to two hundred and eighty thousand. up to 250,000. Every little bit of all.
Well, I mean, that was, that, I would be kind of funny, but I would kind of be serious if they're talking about putting one out here, this might not even be any cost though. On how far away that is. Probably a long.
We have to have a percentage in second one, or something.
It's a 50/50.
So we'd have to go with 125 in it.
No.
You could go, if she gets the full.
If I go for the full amount, which is 250, I have to capture Tracy to match it.
Which is what she's wanting, that's what it's gonna cost. I love it's 250, you had to do 50/50 and they was.
No.
If she gets 250, we gotta swash 250. That's probably gonna cost her on this splash pad. Look how bad it is.
Well. The splash pad is gonna be in upwards of $100. If you say that, real fast, it rolls off.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This down here says that Greenwood City Council is well aware and apprised of the above-mentioned project and will provide local enforcement to develop the cost of the entire project. But up above, there is no project intention.
Then we shall put it in there.
So we're not well aware of the project.
Well, because I said so, I don't know. Charlotte added to it, I suppose.
Which, which project is it?
It's the splash pad.
Both of them?
No. It's the first one, the RTP is for the Iron Route. The second one is for.
So it says Arkansas seeks to improve, Greenwood Arkansas seeks to improve.
Sure.
The production facilities. Is that what you want me to put, splash pad?
Do the whereas.
This was from Tracy's.
Yes.
Didn't touch it. Other than running it.
Yes, that I would say, yes, another whereas.
So you wanna say that maybe this is adopted with the.
I'd say, yeah, like you were saying, and in the very first line, you said funding assistance for a splash pad.
Yes, Delmar splash pad.
Delmar splash pad.
It's probably, I'm not, I'm not all for, but it's probably important that they understand that 500 is not what you're looking at for this to be. If you match, if she got 250, you're gonna match it to 250, that's probably, that's not gonna cover the cost.
Oh, no.
Just so you know.
No.
There's other funding that will have to be.
No.
So far, you know.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm just trying to overcome some of them.
Or is it the Parks Commission?
No, no, the, the, the Parks Commission.
But you guys have to.
Which you do.
Yes.
We're, the city is covering the, getting the water up there to it, my understanding.
Well.
I think the commission made that.
The commission, yes.
Yeah, the commission.
So have we seen any kind of rendering or?
Not yet, but they're working on it.
I mean, I'm just.
Yes, sir. You will see plenty. When I get it in my hand, you will see every, every time we meet from now until there's a splash pad up there.
I'm just saying, there's a whole lot to a splash pad and there's, there's a whole lot to a splash pad.
Yes. There is, yeah, there's more than you mentioned.
Right.
Yeah. You'll see it as soon as I have.
Both of those undergrounds, the, the, all that.
A lot of it is, but.
The cost, I mean.
Yes, a lot of it will be difficult to get the water and sewer up there to it, but there's a lot. There is a lot of detailed work that has to go into the foundation of it as well. So we're not gonna have a splash pad if you're talking about the way it's gonna look. It's, it's not gonna look like you're going to Disney World up there. It's gonna kind of almost fade into the, to the background. It's gonna be more of the nature we look in splash pad is what we have requested. So, no, we have not seen the plans yet, but as soon as I get them, we'll see.
That's what I was kind of getting at, we don't need Ferris wheels and.
No, no. I don't want it to be red, white, and blue, that coming. It will probably have some lighting that will change colors just to make it.
Won't look like the garage.
It might, it could. Yes, it could.
Some things can be basic, it's okay.
Well, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be like.
I see, did you laugh right after calling us?
I can't. But it's gonna, it's gonna look more.
Natural.
Very.
More.
It's not the nature department, so if you have one, you have some. I have a picture, a very small one that I saw on Greenwood, and it kind of, I guess it's gonna look like, I'll talk about my picture and show you. But we want it to have more live rock features and then more than, you go up there and it's really yellow.
It'd be a dollar to block a look for a splash pad.
Yes. But also, it's gonna accommodate up to like 80 kids because, as you know, we've been talking about this for years, a water feature or a water somewhere for the kids to get wet. And I didn't want a feature that only 20 kids can get out there and play on because then I'd be right back here again asking you guys for more money to build on, add on to it. And I didn't want to do that. So while we're getting it all rolled, we might as well make it big enough for kids. Cause there's only kids from a permit town, not just anybody.
I'll make a motion that we, without this resolution, we additioned a splash pad.
Build parks splash pad.
Build one splash pad.
And.
Motion to second.
Also, I just want to make, I need to make known for records that it does say that whereas that the overhead utility lines must be placed underground. I just didn't know that new properties have that.
There's not any now there yet.
Okay.
I said that real quick too, so I'll, I'll.
No, I, I've looked, I've looked. There is one, there is one hole way top of the 19 acres that will have to move over, but that's not gonna, that's not gonna enter this area.
Which, which was done in, in the other, the original, we did that in the back.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel Brown?
Yes.
Micker?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Tammy. I believe that wraps up the agenda. Department reports and questions from council. Got a few over here, several.
How's our staff?
Who are you asking? So, four hearing we had, you know, I think we reported that already, we came out on top, I guess is a good way to put it, after Mr. Hamby very politely drilled me on sand and judge ruling our favor, that information has been sent to Mr. Shores, who has sent to the RDOT.
Right away division.
Right away division to give their blessing that that is indeed a good-to-go easement and then to proceed with putting that up to bid. We hope any day we get a.
Can you ask Jeremy about that ditch? Going up out here?
He was.
Like, how the ditch goes down like that and like to put culverts to fill it each up.
Onto that part of that or a different area? I'm not sure.
Well, like around the church and retirement thing, it's like, could we put culverts along that ditch?
Oh, in front of it.
It's filled under.
I think that's a whole, I did not ask him that.
Well, we, I asked him that, that was what the Warlocks were wanting initially on their property. They, they wanted us to fill in that ditch with culverts and then put the sidewalk on top. And Jeremy says that would just be an astronomical amount in cost and that they would not even consider.
Plus, we would definitely have to go back to RDOT for consideration of that. It's not, it's absolutely a question, but it's expensive. I remember him saying that for sure. If you're trying to keep it off the property. We have it.
No, we're trying to fix the ditch so you can.
Oh, okay. Talk to the city when we take that over as a.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we would pay for it. We're not asking you to pay.
Oh, okay. I think.
It is okay.
Well, next time, Mr.
But if you add a sidewalk, you're making that even worse. It's harder.
Who knows that, Richards? He doesn't, we're not, oh, okay, we're barrel. We'll relax, I'll relax and ask him. That's what I know, that's. Anybody else? Counsel, any questions for these?
I won't thank Chief Dawson, stepped up, troll industry. It's been pretty nice having one to look at.
And he focuses it every.
Yeah, he kind of let you know where he's at.
I'm, I'm grateful, just.
I'm just glad I haven't, I haven't had to call my mom.
Right.
Does the council share a part of this?
Uh, right. I don't know, right in there.
I was wondering, we tickle judge and apply, uh, approve all this. We've been trying to do this on this Burton property for six or seven years. Burton's been willing to come in for 10 years, we've been willing to annex things and then all of a sudden now it happened. I'm just kind of curious.
I think the library has a lot to do with that because that's something that they want, he wants, and he's, as he has said, he gave a, I'm not, this is a quote from him, he gave a lame duck speech the other day and he said that's what it was because he's not running for reelection, so he's trying to get a couple of loose ends and the library is one of them, so. And by the way, Mrs. Tam, you know, see, I still call you Mrs. Tam, see, I'm sorry, but thank you for coming. I, I called Brenda an hour or two before the meeting because she, she is very open to speaking and I'm almost, entertaining that, that you come up and talk to us, that these guys aren't going to be going home. She is the president.
I have been president the past four years. I decided to step down to just past president this year of the Friends of the Library, but it has been a battle and he's been decades worth of work and a lot of conversations and we're happy to finally see some progress go.
She spoke at the Lofts here a couple of months ago and that group is gathered and the judge is there among eight or nine court members to discuss this project and Travis was there to present the, the drawings. And I would tell you too, at first glance, it looked like the pavilion, the community pavilion. Michael, of course, Michael's all over it, I think, as Cheryl said, so, thank you for coming, I appreciate you.
As you would.
She is.
She is.
She will always be on that point, excellent.
And this mayor, I think, he noticed that Cheryl had a lot to do with tipping this off at the center.
Oh, absolutely.
Finally had a project contract and so there's a reason to move.
As I said, I say in front of Jacob all the time, in fact, all the time, and this has been a, that, that place is a, we hate to drive by, I mean, it's just what it is. So with counties helping, the cities moving forward, getting this thing off our center, as you say, I think, major steps. Anything else from council?
You burst me a jerk.
You had a ballgame, I think, so.
No, it's not a ballgame.
Is it not? Who, what is it?
Forty here, 25.
That's my way to game, no, it's 45, 39.
Who, who's ahead?
Fort Carolina.
So here, run exactly.